We gave everybody a little bit of time, so. And after my experience last night, I gave everybody a little bit of Mother Nature time, so. But I'd like to get things going. We are live. Welcome, everybody, to our special board meeting, March 25th, on the ordinances that the town council has put forth. Some of this will be redundant for those of you that were here last night, but I still think it's important, especially for those who aren't here. Understand this: these are not our ordinances. This came from the town council. This package was their package. They sent it to us for comment. But we are just strictly an advisory to the council on this. We have no say as far as a vote is concerned. This is their decision, and they are well within their rights to take our advice or not take our advice. So when you ask us, and I know the impetus is to ask us, please don't do this, we're not doing anything, okay, except commenting. We will open it up for public comment. I will ask you, because I know some of this stuff is very emotional for some people at this point, but please, let's be civil. I don't want any personal comments about anybody, because everybody's trying to do their job, and please stay on task. We have a few more people from last night, but last night was manageable, and I think this is manageable, so I will give you the time to speak. If I give you this signal, it's a polite way of saying, close it up. If you are in agreement with someone, say you're in agreement with them. If you have something additional to add, please add it, but you don't have to repeat what they said, okay? That just gives time for someone else to speak. I'm not going to cut you off, and I'm not trying to dissuade you, just looking at what we have for the night. Our role will be to go through the items tonight and make analysis, and then pass forward a recommendation to the town council. And that is where we go. I want to clarify something that was clarified by town council, our legal assistant solicitor last night clarified it, that the Enabling Act in Rhode Island is still alive and well. There has been a recent popularity in stating that Narragansett has to abide by state law verbatim, crossing every T and dotting every I. It, the Enabling Act allows cities and towns to modify state regulations and laws to fit the needs of the community. The two guiding rules, and you'll hear it from us all the time, is, does this weaken the law? We cannot do that. And it, does it stay within the intent of the law? We have, those are our guiding lines. We cannot steer from those. Procedural law is another thing. We cannot deviate and will not deviate from procedural law at all. Second, even though it doesn't come under any of these, my fear is it will be brought up. There was a discussion last night, we had a small constitutional law class last night, on student versus, three versus five versus whatever. So we debated that last night, and that's last night's conversation. So if we can keep it there, I would appreciate that. Again, we will, staff will address what we're going to do tonight. The way I proceed is to allow each member of the board to speak their mind. I will give the public an opportunity to speak. The board will redirect, and if I have anything to add, I will add. So that said, we need a roll. I don't know, is the party next door, and we didn't get invited?
Mark Brady.
Present.
Dr. O'Neill.
Here.
Tom Kellyman.
Here.
Rupert Friday.
Here.
Stephen Deacon Millen.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have five members present.
Thank you. Again, and I don't have to say this to the, to the board, because they know it, but just to let folks here know, we don't have the luxury of representing one person or a group. We are guided by the mandate that we look after the safe, health, safety, and welfare of the community as a whole. We leave our own personal, we bring our experience with us, but our prejudices need to stay at home. And so we will address everything in relation to the laws that bind us. And that is how we will proceed tonight. That said, council, welcome. Jill, it's all yours.
Good evening, members of the board, folks here and elsewhere. Jill Sabo, Director of Planning. Tonight is night two. You can see up behind me is the four-day schedule, so we did get through last night's, all four topic items, which is great. Tonight, we have the bulk regulations, which is in Chapters 1100 and 1118, as well as the discretionary ordinance changes, which is in Chapters 1117 and 1118. Okay, so I just want to cover a couple of things the chairman just did, that now we are in that 45-day time limit we went over last night. You do understand the charges that you're required to do, the compliance, the findings for the conference of plan and the purposes of zoning. And as mentioned last evening as well, this was one referral down from town council, so it will be one vote back. We're taking consensus and getting what the board feels, and it will be put back for one vote next week. Okay, so today, the bulk regulations and the discretionary zoning ordinance, I'm going to take them in order in that direction. So with the bulk regulations, thank you, if we could turn, thank you. Okay, so, great, so here we are. So the bulk regulations, one of the things about this is that the bulk regulations were actually created in Chapter 1087. So that was done in 2021. And for those of you who are either on the board or in the audience at the time, you may recall, this was done out of, it was born out of the concern about oversized homes, the moratorium. I don't want to go into too much history. I'm sure there are other folks who can do that better than I can. But there was a regulation, Chapter 1087, which was put on the books. Again, unfortunately not codified, so not within the actual muni code. But these are the changes that were done in 1087, right there. Which is, it amended or added several definitions. So it was the bedroom, the bunk room, the driveway for residential. It was the aggregate floor area, gross floor area essentially. For Breakwater Village and outside of Breakwater Village, that was amended. The FAR hards, we added hardscape, lot area gross, lot area net, parking area definition, and a softscape definition. There was, in addition, there was Section 6.4B, which was added, and that was the parameters around the floor area ratio application, because one of the big things that came out of this bulk regulation was the application of floor area ratio for lots less than 20,000 square feet in town. And that included, that included the introduction text, the purpose, the FAR applicability, the max FAR, how to calculate, and then the matrix table that most of you are probably most familiar with, which is, which calculates the FAR and hardscape based on the net law area. Section 7.6, we added in a couple of explanatory pieces regarding hardscape and regarding the front yard softscape requirement. And then Section 7.9 was, we added in some language about the automobile parking spaces. And Section 10, which was more specifications. And actually, Section 12, we added specialties permit, specific and objective criteria for homes exceeding four bedrooms. So that's what was, that's what happened in 1087. The other big thing that happened at that time was that the planning board, when presenting to the town council, said, they're going to come back and look at this in a year. We mentioned this last night briefly. It came up with this, with a previous discussion, I think it was Breakwater Village. And the planning board did just that. They came back within a year, and they, they looked at the ordinance, and they talked to staff, figured out what was working, what wasn't working, and they brought those possible changes to the town council, and the town council chose which changes they wanted an ordinance written for. Some of those things removed things like calculating FAR for areas below the floodplain. You can't have any living area below the floodplain by law, so they removed that area. We removed some of, the town council ultimately removed some of the other requirements, like hardscape calculations for HVAC pads and other utility pads. There were a few different things. So if we go to the, so I just covered all of those. And then if you go to this slide, so right here, this is 1100. So everything you see in yellow is what Chapter 1100 did. So at that, at that second go-around, the planning board recommended, and the town council approved, changes to these locations. So these are the locations I just mentioned, all of those. But then they added, they changed and augmented some definitions for FAR. They changed the introduction text. And then they made some changes to automobile parking spaces. That is Section 1100. That's what you see. The proposed changes before you took Section 1100, which was the amending, the amending chapter to 1087, and it made proposed changes, it's proposing changes to you right now. So of those changes, everything up here behind me, you can see in crossouts. So it removed the floor area aggregate or gross in Breakwater Village, as we discussed last night, and in all other areas of town. It removed that definition. It removed the definition of hardscape. Under Section 6.4B, it removed the introduction text. It removed the FAR applicability text. It removed the matrix table, or is removing, I should say, pending removing the matrix table. It is pending, it is proposing to remove the parking, the automobile parking spaces text. And then, and then you can see right there, it is proposing to actually add in some text for the hardscape, the hardscape requirement and the front yard softscape requirement. One of the, one of the things that staff noticed when I was doing this was, they, the proposal is to remove the definition of hardscape, for instance, but then, under the hardscape requirements, it's changing, it's changing some dimensional text. So there's a, there's a bit of an incongruency right there. I want to just make sure I hit everything, so I apologize for the pause, but.
No, take your time.
I'm looking at both of these things. So, okay, so and the other thing that, that staff noticed is that the, what, it, it did strike the need for a specialties permit for bedrooms exceeding, for homes exceeding four bedrooms, but it didn't strike the objective and specific criteria. So you will see that up there on your list. You can see that in Section 12. I just want to bring this to your attention. This is, these are the bulk regulations, so this is, this is sort of how it started. And the one that you see, yeah. So everything you see up there that doesn't have a strikeout on it is still, it's, it's text that exists that is not proposed to be changed in any way.
Why does sloppy and inconsistent come to mind? Sorry, that was just going around in my head. It would strike me when I was going through this that if you're going to do all of this, why do you leave lot area gross, lot area net, parking area? I mean, if you're going to do this, do this, because you're already doing it really. So if you want to eliminate FAR, which obviously they want to do, those constrain it. So why, I, I just, well, I don't know. I don't understand a lot of this. But anyway, I. Yeah, I'm going to. So for those of you that don't know what FAR and don't know what bulk regulations are, they are really the bread and butter of building. It was, FAR came about by neighborhoods and people coming and saying, look, we appreciate there's growth in town, but our neighborhoods are changing. Densities are getting bigger. We're having large homes on small lots. And it was trying to strike a balance of development and still keeping the character of the neighborhoods. So it's a floor area ratio. It's actually a, I'm trying to think of the easiest way to put it, but it's a relationship between the size of the house and the lot size, and keeping them consistent. So you don't have a five-bedroom house on a lot that is really has a carrying capacity for a one-bedroom little cottage. And that's really the essence behind that. It was asked for, my understanding and my history, it was, came in prior to me coming here, but in all the research, it came actually from the neighborhoods and from staff, and was put in on their behest because of the degree of development, the density, et cetera, so, and the intensity. And I just, when I went through this, the first thing that came to mind was, I think it was Einstein that said, you know, if you do the same thing over and over again, expect a different result. It's the definition of insanity. I mean, if these are all put in, asked by the neighbors and staff and the town, and you take them out, don't you think the same things are going to come back again? But I'm getting ahead of myself, and I'm sorry to editorialize, Jill, because I know I'm getting the I's. So, back to you.
So in the report, on page seven, where we talk about, where I talk about the bulk regulations. I know we covered Breakwater Village last evening. We'll cover discretionary changes in a little while. But the FAR bulk changes and two-family duplex are next week. So it, Mr. Chairman, it is, it is more or less what you were saying. There was an overwhelming concern about, about large homes on small lots, about putting appropriately-sized homes on appropriately-sized lots. That was one of the big concerns at the time. So at that time, which wasn't that long ago, like I said, I, at least one of you and possibly more of you were on the board. There was a 4107, which happened in 2021, and 1100, which happened in 2022. You do have the planning board's recommendation before you. Staff notes in the report provided to you, staff report that the conference plan is still the same, and we haven't had any significant changes in our, or remarkable changes, I should say, in our water sewer infrastructure capacity to date. You'll hear that same comment again as we move through the other discretionary and bulk changes as well.
Anything else to add?
Not at the moment.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we are focused in on, on these, and I ask everybody to keep their comments on these. I know there's a lot of stuff in people's minds, but we got, this is, this is huge, so. Doc?
Yeah, the, yeah, you're, you're right. Hold down the sarcasm here. The, you know, the commonsensical explanation of why these rules and regs are in place is in order to control these mega houses on these little, little lots. That did take place, and then that was the incentive for this to happen and for these rules to be in place. And so I, I would just say in short that whatever was the thought or the thinking behind erasing us, I think you implied it. Why isn't it just going to happen again? It's, I'm, I'm missing something in terms of why this is even discussed. I mean, it's worked so well. Not just at, you know, down at, I'm blocking on it. Yeah, thank you. Breakwater Village is a great example of how it does work so these people can rebuild and fit these houses on those little tiny lots and, and still have a place to live that's reasonable and, as somebody mentioned, safe in terms of, you know, fire and all that. So as far as all the rest of those, I, I mean, I'm stuck on the floor area ratio. And if, if this is all done again in a package form, I see no reason to discuss other issues, parking or whatever, because I can't get past floor area ratio. It works. It's in place. The idea of taking it out for some, we've been given no reason or no logical thought in terms of why would we do, why would we go back in that direction? We all, I think, most of us, have lived in this town for a few years, and we love the character in some of these neighborhoods with these smaller homes and cottages that people, you know, we used to come down from Providence and, you know, enjoy Narragansett. And granted, that's a thing of the past, and a lot of people have moved on, but the idea of putting a big mega place on those little tiny lots, it makes no sense to allow that. It just distorts the community and overbuilds and just takes away the character, the lovely place we live in. So those are my thoughts on it.
Rupert?
So I have a question for Jill. So the, in, in 1118, it strikes the parking standards. I was just wondering when those parking standards were established? Is that, was that done in?
One minute, Mr. Friday. I'm trying to get there.
This, the parking standards for the multifamily and?
Are you referring to the parking standards for cluster developments and multifamily?
Yep.
That's a good question. I'm not, gladly say, I mean, I'm not sure when they were established, but it was certainly not in Section 1087. It was long before that. I can find that date for you if you like.
I would guess that that was done when the ordinance was mostly drafted in, what?
We've had multifamily standards for a long.
Decades.
We noticed this when we were looking, when we were doing our research for site plan review. Yeah, there were, but I don't, unfortunately, I don't have that date, unless it's, might be referencing on my actual ordinance.
That's okay. I just.
Okay.
They've been in a long time.
They've been in for a while, much longer than Section 1087, much longer than the bulk regulations.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then Chairman Wayne's here, and I don't know if it's appropriate to ask questions.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I pretty much echo what Doc O'Neill said about the floor area ratio. I mean, I've looked at the documentation on the history of it, and it's used in Breakwater Village and then townwide, and then amended in both of those places. Seems to be working. I think the reason it got adopted townwide was because it was working in Breakwater Village. So I think without an explanation of why the proposal to delete it, it doesn't make any sense.
Okay. Tom?
Presumably, somebody thinks it's not working the way they'd like to see it work. Otherwise, we wouldn't be looking at what we're looking at.
If you haven't met Tom yet, he is the king of subtlety.
So I just want to make clear that this is not an attempt to modify. This is an attempt to eliminate.
Yes.
You can amend things in an effort to change them in certain ways to make them better in ways that you think they are, or they might be. But this is an, this is an effort to eliminate FAR altogether and replace it with nothing. So that's concerning to me.
Steve?
Okay, so obviously, this is an effort to eliminate FAR, and we've talked about control. And I think, I can't speak for the council, because I haven't talked to them, and I don't know what they were thinking. But to me, it looks like this is an attempt to return some power to landowners in the town. Many of, this is not Breakwater Village. This is townwide. Many of these neighborhoods were developed before the 80s zoning change where we upzoned everything. They're pre-existing, non-conforming lots of record. And in here, it's reverting the changes made in the early 2020s to previous to that. I think the FAR calculation is a bit onerous and confusing to laypeople. I think if you want to build something on your lot and it comports with the setbacks, that's why the setbacks exist. I'm fine with this change. I don't love that they, I didn't see where they took out the specialty use permit for more than five bedrooms, but I don't have a problem with that.
They didn't.
Oh, okay. Yeah, no, that, that seems to make sense. We don't want eight- and 10-bedroom dormitories in any of these neighborhoods.
So, Mr. Deacon, I'm sorry, let me, let me, they didn't take out the specific and objective criteria, but they did strike, they did remove the section within the ordinance that would have called for the specialty use permit.
Right.
Okay, so that, like, I'd be fine with a specialty use permit for larger than five bedrooms. It makes sense to me. There's not a lot of families these days with more than three children that would need more than five bedrooms, and certainly, they could come here and argue their case and, you know, go through the process that way. That makes perfect sense to me. I'm waiting on my third child. I'd love to have a fourth, but I don't think my wife's going to go for it. So it makes sense, and if we did, I would come back here and argue that I need a fifth bedroom. So I'm going to be the odd man out as usual, and I'm in favor of these changes. I think it streamlines the process. It makes it easier for people to understand. And I'm not a huge fan of the FAR, townwide. I think it makes a lot of sense in Breakwater Village, where it's completely built out, and they're on top of each other for sure.
Okay, thank you. I've said already, I don't understand where, where this is coming from. And there was no explanation and no rationale behind it. I agree with Tom. If you're going to make adjustments, you're looking to fine-tune things and improve things. This is just eliminating it, and it's inconsistent. I mean, if you're going to eliminate this, and I'm looking at this from a consulting standpoint, if I'm going to eliminate this, you take out lot area gross, lot area net, parking and softscape. It doesn't make any sense to leave those in there. None. I don't understand why you take away something that was asked for by the community that has been working. And, and in fact, there is flexibility in it, and the planning board has done that with people, and as we do with anything else. We look at need and look at people's hardship and try to judge that. The town council from, and I'm trying not to put words, but I'm trying to understand, what they have been preaching is that by doing all of this, that they will increase housing in the town, and more so, they will increase affordable housing. Okay? Most people don't know who I am, so I'm just trying to give you a little bit of background. I hold a master's degree in community planning. My specialty was environmental and economic impact analysis. I did not go into the public sector, although I did work for the public sector. One of the first things I did, for example, was the economic impact analysis of the return of the Navy to Newport, when Newport did not want the Navy to come back. I do large-scale impact analysis and speculative analysis for some of the largest developers in Massachusetts, Texas, California. So my job is to look at markets and look at exactly this and try to define where the profits are, where the opportunities are. I also hold a PhD in engineering, so I come at things from that perspective. I've been looking at this since I was told before the election by a counselor that this would happen, and tried to grasp why. Look at the new housing. So the town is very much close to built-out. There are vacant lots. You'd have to define which of those are buildable because of all the wetlands. And even those that you can define as a gross buildable lot, you would then have to break down to see which are actually buildable. And I would agree that this would probably prompt new building. Not at the rate that it's going to bring down the cost of housing. I don't think it is also going to raise housing, because I don't think it's going to be a mass grab for vacant land. Vacant land is expensive to develop. So I don't think, I think it would be a neutral impact on new housing. I think it would be a steady growth as it is in the market. And I don't think it'd have really a price impact up or down on the market. Where this is targeted to, and you don't even need my background to know this, and this is coming from 45 years of experience, this is targeted at making large homes on small lots. And that's the low-lying fruit for investment developers. You already have sewer and water. The environmental is already defined. This eliminates upfront cost, huge. You know you have a market. You have defined neighborhoods. You know what those characteristics are. You know whether or not they're moving up or down. This is the grab. This, combined with five bedrooms, is the goal. So where this will have the largest impact is on resale of homes. And this will pull the, push the price up within this market far faster than it has. And I would like to point out, there has been growth in this town, in development in this town, and prices still keep going up in this town, even with this in place. So the market counterticks what the town council has been. So the market counter ticks what the town council has been preaching. The market has been going up because there's demand, and it's being fulfilled. Homes are selling. I live in a neighborhood where homes didn't go on the market. They were passed down from generation to generation. They're now being sold on the market because families can't afford to buy them. So what will this actually do? As I said, there will be some new homes. They will come into the market as new home development will come in slowly, gradually. I don't think it will have an impact either way on the price. Prices will go up, but they're not going to jump because people are starting to build new homes. What will happen is an escalation of home sales, resales. There'll be a push to buy those and redo them in five bedrooms because that is the max allowed for students at this point, and that grants you $5,000 a month in income. And if you understand building, that's a positive cash flow from day one. In Rhode Island, you can get to a point where you can take 100% of your equity, if it's a rental property, and put that money towards a second one. So you start dominoing it. They'll widen the gap between affordable housing and market rates far faster than is happening now. And I would argue soundly that it will eliminate any hope of affordable housing because this is the bread and butter of this board's bargaining chips with developers who even have an interest. Because we can't make someone build affordable housing. But when they come and they want something, they'll sometimes put on the table, I'm willing to do this. And then we can bargain with FAR, with lot coverage, with all of this setbacks. These are all gone. These are the most valuable bargaining chips this town owns, and the town council is giving them away. You're going to squeeze out families. You're going to increase the economic burden on our families that are here, especially older people who are just barely hanging on to their homes because the value of your home is going to go up. Therefore, your taxes are going to go up. It's going to be a reduction in school children. So we're really going to have to look at our existing buildings and decide what we're going to do. We need to start planning for those. It's going to reduce education aid from the state because education aid from the state is different than in most states that I've been in and operated in in that it's not based on income, it's based on the value of your homes. And obviously, the more valuable your homes, the less you need state money. It is going to add to an overburdened infrastructure sewer and water, which I will really point out some of the problems with 40-year-old sewer pipes. And I've encouraged people to Google a picture of what 40-year-old sewer pipes look like when we start talking about duplexes. I get back to the question. This was brought in because of the density of the housing that was being put in small lots, changing neighborhoods, changing the face of Narragansett. We're moving more towards Warwick, Cranston, some sections of Providence. And I don't mean those negatively. I mean bigger, taller buildings, views of waterways getting blocked off, neighborhoods changing in that venue. And this slowed that down. It's still allowed for building. We wouldn't be doing anything on Tuesday nights if it was stopping building. Prices are still going up, so it's still a healthy market. You take that away, you have to know that you're going to go back to what you had before you put this in place. And if that was thought through, then I applaud this council for sticking up for their clients and who they represent. If it wasn't thought through, I'm scared. Any redirect, Doc?
No, I just, again, you heard me say this last night. We're not told why, and I guess I'm saying that naively, right? Why these, these changes are put before us. But to ignore where we've been, what we've done, why we have these rules, regulations successfully on the books, and then to erase them is, it just doesn't make, well, in any case, you can tell I can't support this.
Rupert?
So I think one question that comes up is, so the floor area ratio, what size house does it limit you to? And I don't know, Ms. Sabo, on an R10, a 10,000-square-foot lot, what's the living area that's permitted by the FAR?
Let me pull that up.
She's got to go to her.
Sorry, mathematics, sorry.
Okay, so the way that ordinance is written right now, a 10,000-square-foot lot would have an allowable FAR of .27 or 2,700 square feet of gross floor area.
And that's the living area, so that's not counting the garage and basement?
That's not the garage, that's not the, it's not the basement anymore. That's not the attic, that's not any sheds or anything like that.
So that's, for those of you in the audience, I mean, my house on an R10 lot is, I think, 1,600 square feet. So that's a pretty, pretty large house you can build by right with the FAR. It's a pretty generous standard, I think. Thank you.
My pleasure, good question. Tom?
Nothing further at this time.
Okay. Steve?
Sure, I just have one response, and that's that the town council did send this to us. And as you said yourself, they told you before the election happened that this was something that they wanted to do because they ran on this, and they were elected on this, and they've sent it to us. And that's all I got.
I don't believe they ran on this.
I heard about it before the election, you heard about it before the election, that's two.
No, I was, no, I'm not going to get into this, so.
Okay, well, you brought it up.
Wayne? Do you mind stepping up? And I think at least Rupert has some questions.
Hello.
You're thinking she called in sick today, huh?
Yeah, I know.
Wayne, can you just introduce yourself for people that don't know you and?
Sure. My name is Wayne Pimental. I'm the building official and zoning official for the town.
Thanks.
I guess I start.
Could I, before you jump in? Do you have any general comment on any of this?
Probably relative to the FAR, I know one of the questions was basements was a big issue. We had a lot of people that had an existing house, and when they wanted to put an addition on a family room or expand their kitchen, they weren't able to because they had a basement that was over six foot 11, and that then counted towards FAR regardless of it, whether it had a furnace or the laundry room, it still counted. That was, I got a lot of complaints about that. And now with the basement and the definitions are bizarre. So I don't think the definitions have helped with eliminating basements totally. But that's where I got a majority of complaints, was basements being included in the FAR.
So you were involved right when it was originally drafted?
I was here as far as, yeah.
So, and then I know it's modified, and I just, I believe you were involved in the thinking about the modification. This was before my time here, but.
Yeah, so the modifications has been a, you know, a little.
I'm sorry, I mean, the modifications of the FAR, like, when they took out the garages from the calculation?
Yes, they took out, they took, they eliminated the garages, and they also eliminated unconditioned spaces such as like an enclosed sunroom. As long as it wasn't heated or cooled, those were also exempt.
Yeah. So I guess I'm wondering, since those changes were made, how would you say it's working? I mean, do you run into a lot of situations where because of FAR, people are needing a variance or?
We have had some, some, again, the basement has been a big issue that triggers them to get a, to need a variance. And I think because it was fairly new, there was a, you know, kind of like a pushback as far as getting an approval from the zoning board because they didn't want to cross that threshold of the FAR. So it hasn't been received as greatly by the general public or the homeowners. Because of that, they basically feel as though they're not going to get an approval for any kind of FAR relief.
I guess sort of the projects before you, is there a certain percentage that runs in, that bumps up to the FAR or do you think?
Percentage-wise, I'd probably say 20%, 25% that bump up to it. And, you know, modify their plans or totally abandon their plans because the history has been that they will not get relief from that.
You said, Rupert?
So I have one more, and that's, I know, I've seen some statistics, and I think they came from you, about the percentage, the percentage of the building permits in town that are expansions or tear-down rebuilds versus new building. Is it just ballpark?
Yeah, I don't have those statistics in front of me, but we do have a lot of tear-downs. So much greater percentage than probably any municipality in the state. But I don't have those numbers in front of me. We don't get a lot of new builds on vacant land, you know, far and few between. The majority of them are knock-down rebuilds.
Knock-down rebuilds.
Yeah. I mean, that's the majority of most of our work. And aside from small additions, garages and other small additions. But I would say knock-down rebuilds are a pretty good percentage of what comes into our office.
That's, that's my memory of the numbers I saw, yeah.
Yeah, they're pretty significant.
I think, yeah, I think that's, that was my question, is the changes in 2021 that adjusted what the calculations so that it worked better.
Wayne, I have a question.
Sure.
If the basement issue, and I have, I've voiced several times, I've had concerns with the basement. I think every American has a right to the basement. But if the basement was not an issue, how much of your pushback would disappear?
I think a little, quite a bit, to be honest with you. And, you know, we've had the argument that, you know, it could possibly be converted, you know, if they were exempt. But, you know, we have protocols in place, we have other ordinances and codes that would address that. Should it morph into, you know, a new great room or a new bedroom down in the basement, we could certainly address those. But I think if the basements were completely eliminated from the FAR, that would, I think a lot of people would be very happy with that.
Okay. So outside of the basement, in general, FAR works fine?
It has worked fine, yeah. We haven't really had any other issues with it.
Okay, thank you. Staff, have any thing? I'm sorry.
Thank you. Okay, so I know that Mr. Pimental is aware of this as well. We do have a pending public hearing open with the town council to, to put into our ordinance the changes that occurred in June of 2024. And one of them, as we're all aware of, is the basement cellar issue, which I think, I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, but I believe we're, when you are exchanging the word basement back and forth, I believe you're referring to both basement and cellar.
We are.
But there is a distinction between basements and cellars. And when it was at the state, it was very specifically asked on the floor, and the state had the ability and the opportunity to remove cellars, which I believe is probably the one that makes more sense because it's more, it's more than halfway underground, whereas basements are sort of like, correct me if I'm wrong, Wayne, a raised ranch, less than half.
Yeah, the definition that the state came up with is totally crazy. I mean, I had to draw a sketch to kind of show people the difference between the two and what would be exempt. I mean, I think if you just exempted basements in general without getting into the cellar and basement definitions and just say, if you have a basement, we're not going to count it towards the FAR, period.
So that pending public hearing with the town council, which is heard again in April, April 21st, 2025, the question came up, and that's actually the very reason why it was continued because one of the council members asked for an explanation. They asked for clarification, explanation between basement and cellar and how we ended up where we are. At that time, you may recall, this board was simply trying to make the changes to comply with the most recent state law changes in 2024. You weren't trying to undo any FAR requirement that was already in place. So when those changes were made, where basement was struck, because in our, in our code, basement had a definition, and then the definition of cellar said, see basement. So it was always capturing both.
Right.
And so when, when you made the recommendation, because the state only struck basement and not cellar, and we can't understand or know why, right? That we, that you as a board did not remove cellar because that would have been, that would have been beyond the reach of what your intention was, which was to keep, which was to bring the ordinance into compliance with the 2024 mandated changes. That all being said, it is currently before the council, and the council has the ability right now at that open public hearing to make the changes as they, as they see fit.
I think the state's intention was to eliminate basements, but they got into the cellar basement definitions and just totally messed it right off.
They pulled a definition from a different section of the code.
Yeah.
I think it was a drafting confusion.
Yes.
Doc, do you have a question?
So again, I'm a simple country doctor. Why, why hasn't this basement thing been corrected? Because the state not being able to recognize the difference between a cellar and a basement?
Yeah, well, the state introduced two laws, or they introduced a law last June which got into the definition of a basement and a cellar. And I think, like I said, I think the original intent was to eliminate basements from FAR, but they.
So they did eliminate basements. It was an actual conversation on the floor between two representatives. And one asked the other, I went back and watched it, one asked the other, how come basements and not cellars? And they seemed a little confused, and the representative pointed out cellar is the very next definition after basement. How come basements and not cellars? And they brushed it off and said that the Senate will handle it, and the Senate never handled it.
Yeah, I think if we could come up with our own definition to address that would be probably the easiest.
Yeah, if that's legal, why don't we take care of that?
We are. I'm going to interrupt here, we are. And it's before the, we're trying to, we're trying to.
It is currently before the town council for these 2024 amendments. And this, this very sticking point was, I believe, one of the reasons they asked me to put together a memo to help explain the very situation I just explained.
Yep.
And it will go back before them in three weeks or so.
I can't imagine being on the front line in your shoes, trying to explain that.
Yeah, that definition is absolutely crazy, so.
Anybody else on the board have questions?
Wayne, I just found this dialogue to be quite interesting in terms of how many and what and what's kind of driving the bus in terms of the things that you see. This whole conversation about basement and cellar. I'm wondering if anybody from the council contacted you and asked you similar questions prior to this legislation being introduced or this ordinance being introduced? I mean, I'm trying to find out if, if there was a, if the same level of interest in terms of trying to figure out where the problem was rather than just eliminate it as a, eliminate it carte blanche.
Are you talking about the legislation from the council?
That's correct.
Yeah. Yeah, I was, I was asked through the town manager to come up with a list of issues that have, that my office has seen in the past and what some of those issues were, such as what we're talking about now.
Okay, prior to the ordinance being, the draft ordinance being delivered to us?
I think it was during that same process, during that same timeframe, but prior to it being finalized.
Thank you.
Steve, the floor is yours.
Great questions, Rupert. I got nothing, you covered it all.
Okay. Wayne, do you want to add anything?
No, I think that's it. I mean, I'll be sticking around if you have any other questions.
No problem. Staff, have any other questions?
No, not, not at, not at this time.
All right. Just to the audience, Steve is, sorry, he's ours, not yours, so you don't get to ask him questions, but we do. If you have any questions for him, it comes through me, and I will get your answers for you, okay? At this point in time, is the board comfortable to open it up to the public? Okay. I'm trying to look. I always try to look to see if there's a young face and they need a babysitter at home and they need to go first. So anybody have a babysitter at home? I think I'm safe. Okay, anybody like to speak? I think I'm safe. Okay. Anybody like to speak? Yes, please come up. Good evening. State your name and where you live. Thank you very much. Yeah, it's a red light on. Wayne's trying to save electricity.
How's that? There we go. First, I'd like to thank the chairperson for the voice of reason and for the great explanation of what is before us.
This I'm not going to take credit. This comes from the work of all these people here.
And I thank all and I thank all of you. I really do.
And this person.
So as as a resident, I want to say that I think our bulk zoning ordinance is one of our most important, if not the most important zoning ordinance on the books. And I'm hearing several of you say that you're puzzled as to why this is before you. We have a ordinance that is working, that's worked well, that's been supported by neighborhoods and residents and and former town councils. As a scientist, I like to think in lines, equations, A plus B equals C. And I've been sitting here last night and tonight thinking, okay, why is this happening? What's the equation? I can't come up with an equation, but I can come up with a bunch of bubbles, like a network analysis where you can draw lines from one to another and maybe to many. And so I'm just going to throw out some of the bubbles that are in my head, starting with Speaker Sikarchi, who has a very well-publicized agenda to increase housing in the state regardless of municipal zoning laws. And then we have a town democratic committee that put forward a town council slate of five that are supported by Narragansett 2100. So Narragansett 2100 is another bubble. And now we have those folks elected and they did not run on changing zoning, Mr. De Simone. They ran on listening to residents and building unity.
Okay, let's let's not keep them personal.
No, okay. Yeah, no, I just wanted to. I just wanted to say.
I appreciate, but.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for the chastising. I take it. And then we have a town council that is in three months putting forward all these zoning changes. And we have a town council pro tem that is the largest landlord in town and owns currently owns 50 undeveloped lots, most of which are currently unbuildable according to our bulk zoning law. And this council also then replaces a planning board member, and this is no offense to you. I believe you're a good guy, but replaces someone that should have been given their next term with a developer. So I'm looking at all these bubbles and seeing how do you connect all of these bubbles together? It's it's no secret. And I know you guys can't say these kinds of things, but I can. It it sounds to me like a very well orchestrated movement. I'm not asking why anymore because it's starting to make sense to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Yes, young lady. There's way too much mileage on this body to be young, I got to tell you.
Hi again. Good evening again. Kelly Donovan, 116 Central Street. I agree with our prior speaker and with the sense of the board on this. It ain't the bulk regs and the FAR ain't broke. I don't think they should be tampered with. I had one question. Mr. De Simone, I believe, had suggested that setbacks replace the FAR protection. In other words, the implication being we don't need FAR because setbacks take care of the protection. I would like you to ask staff if that would be their interpretation, if they would agree with that.
That's a that's a loaded question because the next thing we're going to do is eliminate setbacks. So.
Well, yes.
Staff, you want to you want to ask you want to ask the answer the question in the present moment?
That's right. And then with if setbacks were to be loosened per the proposed regs. But.
Prior to FAR, there were three ways to control the building envelope. There were setbacks, lot coverage and height. So imagine a 3D envelope that you could build. FAR controls within that 3D envelope, controls the size of the structure because prior to you could build a straight box, straight up, and that was what was, I think, causing some of those original issues, a la the moratorium and whatnot. If FAR goes away, setbacks are still there. They don't we go back to the way it was. They they will control development. They will control building in the sense that they they are a dimensional component.
Right. But they do not provide the same protections as setbacks plus FAR, would you say?
It's an it's it's an additional layer. So if you take away a layer, you're taking something away. If you're asking me personally or subjectively if I think it's going to I I it's a case by case basis.
Not personally.
But when you take a layer away, you take a layer away.
I think you answered it by saying that we would have less protection if we take away FAR and leave only setbacks and.
It would change the it would change the 3D envelope in which you on which you could construct.
Okay, thank you.
My pleasure. Anybody else? Sir?
Hello, I'm Chris Schaefer.
I'm going to Chris, I'm going to interrupt you. By the way, folks, if I do this, it means wrap it up. It's a polite way of doing this instead of me just announcing to the world that you're going on and on.
Sounds good. I'll keep this short. So.
That's all right. I know it's just big problems. We haven't had any.
Hi, I'm Chris Schaefer, 33 Old Pine Road. So I'm an architect. I've worked for developers for the last 15 years in Boston and New York. My job as an architect, first and foremost, is not designing buildings. It is how to extract value out of every square foot on a given lot size. If there is formulas for this, it's called BOMA. So it's sort of an international standard on how to measure building size with and buildings and how much you can extract ultimate profits from this. So with that being said, these rules, the only conclusion wanting to come from is this is strictly a move for profits. Everything you had mentioned earlier, Mr. Brady, is dead on. This will not solve affordable housing. It will not solve housing stock. It will make it more difficult. The value of the land will go up if there are no regulations. Simple as that. So, yeah, having learned how to, I guess, exploit these limitations part of my career, this is exactly what this move is, is to further exploit what's available. So thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Schaefer.
Chris, where do you live?
33 Old Pine Road.
My pleasure. Anybody else like to speak? Sir?
Good evening. Harry Schofield, 9 Atlantic. I just want to echo the sentiments of the last three speakers. I would like to compliment the chairperson on his analysis of the likely economic output. I mean, outcome of this. I think you're right on the money. I also want to reiterate, as you know, Gail said, Tom Council did not run on this issue. They did not. And it's, you know, it's it's, I would say illustrative to me that 80% of you who've been on this council for many years and do a good job, see the lunacy of this. And the one newest member doesn't.
Don't don't go there.
Well, I wanted to make the comment.
That's not a well. I'm telling you.
It's the truth, though. And what I do want to say, what I do want to say is that it's true, this has nothing to do and will not help affordable housing. If this town and the town council cared about affordable housing, it'd be up beating on the state, build more dormitories at URI. It's obvious that this is a giveaway to developers. That's exactly what it is. And and honestly, it speaks of almost legalized corruption. So I hope that you will come back with a recommendation that you soundly reject this for all the reasons you, Mr. Chairman, articulated early this morning. This is just a giveaway to developers at the expense of the residents of this town. There's no other, I think, as Mr. Hanley said last week, just reject it and send back the reasons you've articulated as the why it's a bad move. This is obviously a good zoning ordinance. I think Jill will attest to the fact that, you know, Mike DeLuca must have put a couple of years into getting this right, along with past town councils. And to try and wipe it away under the dark of night, so to speak, what other conclusion can you make? As I said a week ago when I was here, that this is just a just a move to pad the pockets of developers at the expense of residents and the school system and the sewer and water system and the infrastructure of this town. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to remind everyone here, you will not make personal comments. If you do, I will shut you down. Understood? Thank you. And at that note, if I haven't scared anybody off, anybody else like to speak? Oh, the hands now go up. Young lady?
Thanks for calling me up.
Hey.
My name is Carol Spaziano. I live on 12 Vernstrom Road.
Pull the mic, dear you. Yeah, Carol was going to sit down.
Sorry. My name is Carol Spaziano. I live at 12 Vernstrom Road in Narragansett. Where I live, there used to be beach houses. So the lots are like 50 by 100. I can't imagine. We have problems already, which you brought up, so I was very happy to hear someone bring it up, the sewage treatment plant. How is it going to hold all this building? I don't know. We have problems now with that sewage treatment plant. In the summer, when a lot of people are here, and there are some developments that I don't know if you're familiar with the house on Ocean Road. It's a very big house that there was a little small beach house. They put a three story house on and they rented out for like 1,500 a night in the summer. When they're all when that is full, we're always calling this sewage treatment plant because there's an odor, this problem. It just can't handle it. And that's only one house. So I can't imagine what would happen. So I just want to thank all of you for your time and your effort that you put in, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry? Sorry, I'm going to defer to.
Oh, my God. No one else got that creative.
So Moses does come to the mountain.
Terrence Fleming, former member of the planning board. Appreciate, obviously, what you guys are doing. And 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 I was a member for the entire time, fortunately or unfortunately, 30 years through Breakwater Village, through bulk zoning, through the dimensionals, all of it. And and I do have to say that what everyone's saying, what you all said, is true about bulk zoning. It was designed to limit and try to control the massing and scaling of large homes in small neighborhoods. I bet something down that a majority of the council doesn't realize this applies to only 20,000 or less square feet. It's applying to small lots. That's the whole point. Houses looming over other houses. To Jill's point, the setback height and lot coverage, we still experienced these enormous structures that were just dominating small neighborhoods. That being said, when Breakwater Village came to us and proposed this, and they did, no one can change that history. It was at their impetus. We put it in and we watched it over a number of years and it had a tremendously beneficial effect. People got to renovate their homes, got to make them nicer, and it still didn't impose on the neighbors. FAR was responsible for that. That's the only reason it worked. So when it came time, we saw so many proposals, situations where houses were just enormous and on 10,000 square foot lots and neighbors complaining. We invoked FAR and it has worked. Basement sellers notwithstanding, we can debate that. To your point about modifications being done rather than throwing the entire thing out, that's something you can continue to look at. But FAR worked. And I got to tell you from a political perspective, in the 30 years, this was an issue that had the greatest consensus among the population of Narragansett that I recall. Not the student, not the unrelated. There were tremendous divisions. Almost everyone supported this. And it's interesting, they say politics makes strange bedfellows. There were the people who were the trying to control the student population who supported bulk zoning. I, public record, was never one of them and opposed what they wanted to do all along. But I didn't like the massing and scaling in the neighborhood. So these disparate groups came together to support this ordinance, probably to a greater degree than any other thing I can recall. So why the council is throwing it out? It does kind of lead to the conclusion that the only thing left are the developers looking for higher profits. That's kind of the only thing left. I believe people have certain rights with their property. We all do. But to throw that throw that around as some absolute without having controls or restrictions is irresponsible. So I hope the council sees this. I do, just as I leave, want to make one point of order, Ms. Sabo. The FAR, correct me if I'm wrong, the FAR, and this gets into weeds that nobody wants to get into, but unfortunately, they're weeds that you have to get into. The FAR for a 10,000 square foot lot was 3,100 square feet. It got modified based on the 15% bump that you can get by just filing some paperwork. So the net effect is you can get a 3,100 square foot living space on a 10,000 square foot lot. And I'll tell you, folks, if somebody can't build a hot a house to that level, something's wrong. 3,100 square feet of living space is a lot on a 10,000 square foot lot. Is that I'm correct, right? They.
You're correct, Mr. Fleming.
It was modified. The 2,700 was on the assumption that somebody's going to walk in the next day with the paperwork to get the 15% bump that Speaker Sikarchi put on to the law. And that's why we did it.
Yes. So the, yes, so, Mr. Fleming, so the FAR allowance right now is point, I think it's 0.27, but with the 15% modification brings you back to what it was pre 2024, which is 0.31 or 3,100 square feet.
And again, if you modify, the council does a responsible thing and takes a look at Wayne suggested with basement sellers and does something to modify that particular component, you still get 3,100 square feet on a 10,000 square foot lot. Come on, folks. That's more than enough. The developers can still make a nice profit on that. Thanks. Appreciate your time.
Anyone else? Young lady?
Sue Bush, 65 Robinson Street. Thank you all for your consideration, careful consideration, your expertise and bringing all of that to the table. It's really appreciated. And to staff, your hard work. I moved here over 20 years ago. I had been here for graduate school, moved away, came back. We were so excited to be here. And part of what we love about Narragansett is the simple simpleness of it, not ostentatious, trees, grass, you know, nature and open space. And bit by bit, that's been encroached upon. I think it's really important to the quality of life. I think it's really important to having just a healthy environment, to no stormwater runoff, you know, controlling stormwater runoff and having healthy yards. So I really appreciate you all thinking about these things. I was going to point out a house across, I hope my neighbors aren't watching, directly across the street from me, 48 Robinson Street, R10, 4,449 square feet. It looks like a mistake. I mean, it's a beautiful house. Looks like a big old mistake. It needs bigger setbacks. It's enormous. Neighbors are really nice people, only live there in the summer. But it's it looks like a mistake. And the big boxy things that we see for students look like mistakes. I see huge boxy things with literally a triangle glued to the top, like this adds charm. And it just looks like a mistake. So I know there's a little bit of subjectivity in what we all call charm, but I think charm is important to all of us and to our quality of life. And so I think it's important to keep this as a tool to protect that. And I think if somebody's trying to get rid of it, it's it's for one thing only, and that's profit. So thank you very much for your help with this.
Somebody else?
Thank you, planning members. Steve Ferrandy, 44 Sylvan Road. I have a handout I'd like to give to the chairman. It's a.
Go to the secretary.
Okay, that's fine. It's this is a pre-bulk zoning pictures of what some of the bigger houses that came in and some of the. and some of the after-bulk zoning and some of the new development. And there's a marketed development of some, and I didn't have to go too far around the neighborhood to see these. You can see the higher houses basted, and this one here is some new development, so.
No, this is our secretary here. That is staff. They're professional. He's the secretary.
I wanted to take a minute of my time so people can just flip through the six pages of each one, if you need it.
Well, I don't, you're on the clock, so I suggest you use your time.
I just want to make sure the end gets looked at. It's the before and the after, and I'll speak in the meantime. What's been said here is completely right. It's accurate for a long time. It started in the Breakwater Village. It started in Eastwood Look and other areas. The neighborhood residents couldn't evolve. They couldn't believe it. And the most egregious thing was that the residents couldn't understand that the town wasn't protecting them with the zoning. And this is what happened. It just became too much. So in Eastwood Look alone, I did a study on some bedrooms between about 2018 and '19 to about 2021. One neighborhood added 50 bedrooms between taking a, you know, three-bedroom or four-bedroom colonial and putting six and seven bedrooms in that. So, you know, that's really how we got here. The sorry thing about it is, we didn't bring this through. I'm happy we have this, but we didn't have this bulk zoning soon enough. And it really put a foothold for the, you know, rabid investment market to come in, put your bedrooms up. And let's face it, we all know a legal bedroom is 10 by 7 with an egress window. It's not very hot of a, it's a state law. So grateful at all the planning boards. Looked at it, saw the voice of reason. A lot of pushback either way from doing it. People are still pushing back on it. But it's nice to see that we have it in place. And it really has, you know, as the pictures would show, it shows the difference in it. There hasn't, you know, there's not as much, I believe there was more of the bigger houses built than some of the newer ones that fit in. So that was the point of it. And the only thing I can say is the rewrite of this, maybe it was, they took out enough of the 1118, I guess, and it nullified it anyways. Maybe it'd be too egregious to line out 15 or 16 pages as opposed to, you know, picking out the main factors that are the controlling interest or the controlling pinpoints of it. So it's been a long time coming. And the only issue is really, and it's right, most people, like Mr. Fleming said, they don't realize it's just on 20,000-square-foot lots. So you can go anywhere else in town. You can put two 15,000-square-foot lots, get a 30,000. You can basically can primarily do whatever you want. Right now, right now, there's nothing permit, there's no hardscape, there's no softscape. So a lot of our town is still unprotected. This is how we get to these places where we try to make one fix and it doesn't fix the other. Granted, that was for the smaller lots and all. Maybe they work better in the other lots. But if the investors really want to do what they want to do, buy the bigger lot, and you could probably put an eight-bedroom house up there without a problem. I hate to say that. I do. But this is where we're at. So thank you, planning board, for taking us up, taking the time to do this. It's greatly needed. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak?
Yeah, hi. John Hanley, 10 Willden Strive. And I did take two Valium tonight.
You've been doing fine.
Well, so the doctor here mentioned character. I'm going to take a little bit different tact tonight on this. Mentioned the character of the town and the size of these houses. So speaking of character with surrounding residences, believe it or not, in 1975 and 1976, I rented a house at 35 Sylvan Road, which is in Eastwood Look. 35 Sylvan Road is a two-bedroom home, right now directly adjacent to some huge, I'll use the term looming again, monstrosity. And across the street is another monstrosity. I encourage all of you, just take a drive-by and look at how ridiculous things have become. Also, in 1982, I bought a home in Briggs Farm at 74 Daytona Avenue and lived there for seven years. The lot next door was vacant. Take a drive-by there, too, and see how ridiculous that next-door house looks next to this nice, well-kept two-bedroom home. Completely out of character. Now, if you please do that, and after you look at both of these houses, visualize in your mind if we allow 40-foot houses to be built in these neighborhoods. You know, to sum it up, I mean, we got networks and doc collection. We got experts far beyond my simple outlook on life. But all I see in all of this stuff is build wider, build longer, build higher, and build closer together. It's an investor's and developer's dream and will ruin this town. And once it's ruined, it's forever.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? I'm going to go way back. He's old. I could probably have you talk, Jesse, by the time he gets, you know. Oh, wait a minute, he's sprinting. He's sprinting.
Good evening, members of the planning board, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mike DeLuca. I live at 21 Middlebridge Road. To reiterate my introduction last night, as you folks know, I was the planning director here for nearly 19 years. And before that, I was a member of the planning board for 12 years. So I've got 30 years of experience in the planning function in this town. And with that, a lot of memories. So what I'd like to do is share with you, picking up a lot on what Mr. Fleming provided, share with you the history of this and why we have FAR and the related ordinances, the related regulatory standards in the books that we do today. The town, I'm reading from something that I typed up, but I'll be trying to get through it quickly. "The town has been a subject of heavy interest by outside development communities for many years. It has been the target of real estate investment trusts interested in making money in seasonal and transient housing market. This interest was expanded yet again beyond the norm during the COVID crisis, when millions of people abandoned their inner-city homes and some found their way to our town." The folks who actually bought here and/or renovated their summer homes to live here, some of them, many of them, went to zoning board for relief and got relief to build additions. They had little summer cottages. But the investors, on the other hand, were intent on building, you know, adding on to create the largest houses they could possibly, that the parcel possibly could support. In the past 10 years or so, and those of you who've been here for a while can attest, staff and the boards have seen numerous applications where three or more forms of zoning relief were requested in order for that individual or that company, that developer, to achieve what they had asked for. It, very rarely did they address the issue or the standard that was in place at the time of least variance necessary. That term was, up until just a year ago, one of the key standards that the zoning board applied in their decision-making. It no longer exists. In January 2020, the town council issued an order for a moratorium on development in order for the staff to find a way to regulate housing size in a manner that could be appropriate and defendable. Leading up to that meeting in January were many months of people coming to the town, going to their council members, complaining about certain buildings being built in this town in certain neighborhoods. And it was more than one. It was a fair number of them. The unfortunate part was that these oversized homes were often permitted because the zoning board had few tools to restrict their size. So the community development staff started right away, late January, right after the council issued that order. The town manager directed me and my staff to study the issue of regulating home size. When I tell you that the entire staff put in enormous number of hours, I'm not exaggerating at all. Somewhere in the range of probably 200-person hours were utilized. And in the month of February, late January to late February, the staff drafted an ordinance that they brought to the planning board in early March. It's March 2020. Shortly after our first meeting that we reviewed it, the COVID lockout hit. Changed a lot of things. We had to reschedule meetings. We had to learn how to do Zoom. But we provided, the staff provided a draft to the planning board for their review in early March. The meeting in early March was very well-attended. We had a number of members of the public there. Some of the members of the public here tonight were there. And there was lively discussion among the board members also. They sent our staff back to revisit several elements of it, some of which they wanted to see changed or researched in more depth. Some things they wanted to have us look into adding, which we did. And the second draft was provided shortly thereafter. So I'm saying, I'm giving you all this, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Jill remembers it, she lived through it, as did Heidi. I'm telling you this because I want you and the folks at home and the folks here to realize that drafting the bulk zoning regulation that included FAR was not done haphazardly. It was not an initiative of this board or this staff. It was initiative of the public that came down through the town council. And we were given, I was given the marching orders from the town manager to get this thing done, and it was top priority. We looked at so many different variables. We studied ordinances from Chilmark, Massachusetts, which is on Martha's Vineyard, to Honolulu, Hawaii, and everywhere in between. Probably 15 to 20 different ordinances. Some called it FAR, some called it proportional development regulation. They didn't all have the same terminology, but they had a lot of things in common, which was to put a mathematical formula together. The resultant ordinance we gave to the town, to the planning board, had a variable FAR, which if you look in 1118, you'll see it, it's scratched out right now, but it's 19 tiers with a lot size, with every 1,000-square-feet of lot size, the FAR changes. And it works invertedly. The FAR is highest for the smaller lots than it is, and it's lowest for the larger lots, up to 20,000 square feet. So the smallest lot, 2,000-square-foot lot, could have a 960-square-foot home. The largest lot could have, at the time, a 5,000-square-foot home, which now is around a 4,800-square-foot lot home. Additionally, the town implemented restrictions on the amount of hardscape because we didn't want people just paving their entire properties. And there would be some green parts to those homes, those house lots. Several exemptions were added for fairness. Mr. Pugh is here today, and Mr. Pugh was on the council at the time and raised a concern about garages. That garage exemption was brought to the forefront by him. Detached small structures, porches, as Mr. Pimentel mentioned, decks, garage space, I already mentioned that, and areas under the FEMA base flood elevation were also exempted. So, conclusion, my comment here is, this is not an anti-housing law. It doesn't, it doesn't restrict people, it doesn't stop people from building on their homes, on their lots. It ensures proportionality between the building and the lot itself. Its sole purpose is to ensure that homes built on lots of less than 20,000 square feet are proportional to the area. In fact, it ensures, as with the same ordinance in Breakwater Village, that the smaller home lots will have some smaller homes built on them, that they have the right to build those homes. And that they don't necessarily have to go to the zoning board to get the approval to do that. It does not violate state law, although the calculation for FAR for basements is now prohibited, as already discussed, as a result of a bill passed by the General Assembly last year. And by the way, I was the person who brought the basement seller division up to the members of the General Assembly. Sorry, Wayne. I'm done with my comments. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
No. Would you like to submit those to the secretary? He's not doing anything right now.
Oh, okay. I have a clean version of my.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Young lady?
I feel like we have a private club going on here right now. Jill Lawler, Sarasota Avenue. I have to just add on to Mr. Fleming's comments. Having served on three councils, I can tell you that the FAR issue, when I received an email or a phone call from any resident in the town, people who would normally yell at me for other topics, I'd see their name, I'd say, uh-oh, watch out. I'd see a big thank you. It was unifying. So it kind of scratched my head when I, last night, still searching for why is this happening? I went back to the council meeting from February 3rd and wanted to listen to the discussion, because that's when this motion came up about the zoning changes. And I listened to the discussion with the council. And a member mentioned that during campaigning and within their 71 days, because that's how long it took to get this item on the agenda, 71 days, it's not business days, total days, which I have to say also included Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays, that they received enough emails and phone calls to make them to want to have to take a look at all of the zoning. So a question was posed to that person. This is an awful lot to take a look at once. Would you want to make it in small packs? And the response was, it's not verbatim. The response was something to the effect that, we want to get this done, so let's just get it done quickly, just once. So then another comment was made. Are you looking to actually have the planning department look into this along with a solicitor? Is that what you're looking to do? And the response was yes. The discussion from the council, we want the planning department, not you, but Ms. Sabo, to take a look at this along with a solicitor and then come back to the council with your thoughts. They can add their comments, and then the council can then send to you. So my question to you, Mr. Brady, from Ms. Sabo, is did the planning department actually work on this with the town solicitor?
Counsel, does she answer that? Yep. Please use the mic. Please answer.
And the question again?
The question would be, when the town council directed the town solicitor and the planning department to work on this, to look at the zoning laws, to look at it and then report back to the council, did the planning department actually take part in that conversation with the solicitor? No. So, Mr. Brady, I submit to you that that process was not correctly handled. Process is very important in law. We talked about this during last night's meeting extensively. The council directed the planning department, Ms. Sabo and her staff, her hard-working staff, to work on this along with a solicitor. And then 30 days later, the solicitor came back with all the zoning changes without the input from the planning. I think that's why the five of you, many of us in the audience who put years of our lives to making these zoning changes happen are scratching our heads, saying, where is this coming from? How is this happening? But the input wasn't there. So we didn't have the thoughtful time from Ms. Sabo's committee, from Ms. Sabo's department, to take a look at this and add suggestions. It was just pushed on to us. And I did ask a qualifying question last night of which solicitor wrote this, because it wasn't clear. From the council meeting last night, that I watched last night, on the 3rd of March, I'm sorry, on 3rd of March, the 3rd of February, they directed the solicitor to take a look at it. They didn't name which solicitor. And since they had just removed the zoning solicitor and replaced it with a new solicitor simply the month before, I kind of thought it was the zoning solicitor that would be doing this. That was just my thought, based on my work on the council. When we'd have a zoning issue, the zoning attorney would handle that and the council would have no means on it. So I just want to bring it up, reiterate again. Mr. Fleming is dead-on. Anytime anybody had something to say about the FAR, whether they disagree with me about anything else, they always thanked me for my hard work on the FAR. And it's really too bad that Ms. Sabo was not given the opportunity that she was afforded and was asked to do by the council in a 5-0 vote. They just went ahead with their solicitor and put in what they wanted.
Thank you. Mr. Pugh? Thank you for your patience. He looked like Mr. Carter. He looked like Mr. Cotter over there.
Good to see you all. Thank you. Jesse Pugh, 40 Birchwood Drive. So I do think, you know, pretty much everything's, for the most part, has been covered, a lot of good points. I'd also like to compliment Mr. Brady on your statements earlier. I know everyone made great points, but you were especially articulate with what you went through or went over, so I appreciate that. I'm just going to add a few points that I think were maybe not completely covered. So, the way I look at this, and again, I was involved in this heavily with staff here and the previous board, as well as people in the audience here. And I will say that there are a lot of people here that spoke that have not served officially for the town, but are very involved in the production of this sort of ordinance by sending emails, by speaking at public forums, and giving input and feedback. So, this was an initiative that had a lot of different people involved in putting together, whether officially or not. But I see the bulk zoning ordinance as really like the centerpiece of the housing strategy for Narragansett. And when I say that, it kind of brings me back to what Mark, Mr. Brady, said last night, where these different ordinances that were sent to you all are really like very intertwined. And they work together, and they're related, which is why they're batched and bundled together in certain ways as we go over them over the next week. And it's the same thing here with the bulk zoning. It's related to how college rentals exist in town. It's related to how short-term rentals exist and are built and are marketed, and then attainable housing. So, and I say attainable specifically, not affordable, because we really don't have affordable housing in Narragansett. But I think attainable is a definition where maybe there are some housing available in some way for people, which now is not really the case at all. But if you remove bulk zoning from the books, then all of these other issues that we have become bigger issues. And that would happen immediately. As soon as this is voted to be removed, you immediately go back to where we, where the town was in 2020 and earlier. So, as I think back to when we were working on this, it really did stem from like a complete feeling of desperation by residents in town. People were desperate for the town to do something when they saw what was being built in certain neighborhoods. When the two houses started going up on Sylvan Road, eight-bedroom houses on small lots, I think it really hit people that they were seeing these purpose-built structures that were built specifically to be college rentals and short-term rentals, and they realized this is going to continue to happen more and more, and wouldn't be just in their neighborhood. And that's what spurred on, you know, the, the construction of this ordinance and the work that Mr. DeLuca, his department, and the planning board did to put it together. You know, because we had an issue. We had like a proven method that had been proven over years in Breakwater Village, and we could use that and tweak that. I do think it generally works in town. It's definitely not perfect. We have the discussion over basements. But we did spend time, over months and years, to really try to make this work for everybody. You know, down to the very, very, very minute details, you know, things like the pads for HVAC units outside. I remember a long discussion on, how are we measuring this even? Or is this getting measured from the interior or the exterior walls? And you have that, maybe that 12 inches, but you think about that across the whole house, that's like a significant amount. So it's not like the town put this in place and said, we're just going to do this, and we don't really care. We're going to get what we want out of it. We want it to work. We want it to work in the same way that housing regulations have always worked, because there's always been regulation of some sort. This is just another way to do it. Homeowners have the power to build within the regulations of the town. And I don't think that this is overbearing any other way than setbacks or height restrictions or lot coverage is. It's a different way to do it. So, I think that's basically it. Two more quick points. I do want to agree with Ms. Lawler and a few others that have said that this is, I believe, a unifying issue generally in town. I could tell you, when I was on the council, I received plenty of nasty emails from multiple people in the crowd on other issues, but this was one where we agreed, and we do still agree. So, I think it's kind of a microcosm of the general feeling, where this issue is something that most people agree with, even if maybe the exact details are not always in agreement. The one last thing, Mr. Brady, you had said earlier that, you know, the definition of insanity, same, do the same things over, get the same results. I think that is a good point, although I would say it's not 100% correct, because if we go back to doing the same thing, which would be removing bulk zoning, we will see a similar result, not the same result, because the result could potentially be 15% larger than what we used to see. So you're going to go back to where we were, but then people, if the next item on this agenda gets passed, will do those buildings 15% bigger, and maybe 30% bigger if pending legislation goes through. So that's just another thing to keep in mind, how these, this all works together. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I thought I saw a hand over on the wall.
Kevin McCann, 31 Pleasant Avenue, Narragansett. Once again, I want to really commend the entire planning board for, you know, for spending their time and looking at these problems, and then opening it up to the town residents, something that the town council should have done beforehand. But that said, years ago, when I first started in the workforce, a boss once told me, if it ain't broke, why fix it? And everything that I've listened to tonight seems to say that our ordinances are working. Then why should we go and try to tear it down? If there's some problems, identify the problem, correct the problem, but you don't tear down the entire set of ordinances. No, it would only create chaos. And once again, you know, thank you very much for your time, and please, as Mr. Hanley had said, send it back to the town council as is. And I mean, let them identify what the problems are with the specific ordinances, and then we'll address them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Young lady?
I'm not coming either.
Have you, take us a look around this room. I got news for you.
I'm very well aware, because that was my, that was my time here. Anyway, I just wanted to bring a one.
Can you give your name?
Oh, sorry, Robin Plaziac.
And your address, please.
15 Birchwood Drive.
Thank you.
Just one thing that nobody mentioned, because I think it's kind of important. In 2017, we wrote, that was the last full rewrite of the comprehensive plan, and that focuses a lot on how to get families to town and how to, you know, improve the town in terms of quality for the people who live here. And I just don't think this is in line with what the current comprehensive plan says, because I just don't see how it would help bring families to town. And I know the comprehensive plan does a lot of other things, and says a lot of other things, and addresses many more issues than that, but I just don't think it should be ignored, and no one brought it up, so.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing nobody else. Re-reck, Doc?
Yeah, I, just a little thing in passing, Terry Fleming and I grew up in New Jersey, and when Terry was on the board here for many years, we would talk about the towns, the beautiful little towns that we knew that were ruined, ruined by lack of foresight, control, if you want to use that term, control. You just totally were destroyed, solid concrete, big massive structures down near the water. Just, I, you know. In any case, I was very fortunate, I came here back in the 60s and been here ever since. I love the area, and as has been said here a couple of times, common sense should prevail Floor area ratio has been working, and it should be maintained as it is, and somehow we can figure out the difference between a basement and a cellar, right? Thank you.
Rupert? So I want to reflect a little bit of what I've heard tonight. The, this, this ordinance, the floor area ratio, the bulk zoning, is essentially on lots of 20,000 square feet or less. And I know we've seen projects that came in that we were reviewing for a variance that were on lots that were, I don't know, 22,000 square feet. And I'm like, wow, this is a really big house, why aren't we looking at it floor area ratio? And it was because it didn't come in under that, it didn't, didn't qualify there. I think it's not anti-housing, as has been mentioned tonight, and, and we have many, many small lots in this town. And this ordinance ensures that houses are proportional and scaled to the lot size. There's no need to go to the zoning board if you meet the standards. I think the standards are pretty generous. And still allows pretty large houses on, on fairly small, small lots. I actually think, sitting on the planning board, I think there's some loopholes in there. I think what's defined as a bedroom, I think there's, we see plans every couple of months that looks like a bedroom, but doesn't count toward the floor area ratio for some minor technicality. And I see a new loophole showing up, a house across the street from me. They're building an enormous garage. It doesn't count in the floor area ratio. And I think, I think, once built, houses have a long-term impact on, on the character of the neighborhood and our quality of life. And I think, as been said tonight, it's a proven method to address an issue that has been in town, and, and it, eliminating it will not help us get more families in town, won't help us with housing affordability. So I really think the proposal to line it out is, is really misguided.
If you go back and look at the town council meeting on February 18th of this past year, there was a colloquy that took place between Councilmember Durkin and a member of the public whose name escapes me right now. But that was a conversation that went and was triggered by this gentleman talking to Councilman Durkin about difficulty he was having with respect to the application of FAR in terms of being able to build an appropriate auxiliary dwelling unit for his mother-in-law. And it went back and forth for a little bit, because it got confused between the auxiliary dwelling unit and the, and the FAR. But during that conversation, Councilor Durkin cited the homes on Sylvan Drive that we've all seen tonight, and we've talked about tonight, as the proximate cause of the enactment of the town's bulk zoning ordinance, saying in part, and this is a quote, "It's very unfortunate that those two buildings were built on Sylvan Road in Scarborough. They were eight bedrooms, and I feel bad for anyone who's had to live by them." Now, I think, as I've thought about that, I think, A, it's, I mean, it just stands basically on its own for what it says and what it means. B, I think we have a responsibility, to the extent that we can't do more than feeling bad for people, but to take appropriate action when we can. I, you know, neighborhoods, neighborhoods will always change, pace of change, the degree of change, the rapidity of change will, will change, but when you look at homes like those two homes on Sylvan Road, and you think about physically what it's done to the neighborhood, and how, what's done physically has happened aesthetically, and more importantly, what's happening socially there, is a fundamental dynamic that begins to take place in a neighborhood that bulk zoning was essentially enacted to address. I particularly am, find bulk zoning to be effective, because it looks at actual lot size and not the zone, because as we all know, there are, the zones, there are substandard lots of record in every zone, and some zones are kind of littered with substandard lots of records. And so in some respects, this is the most effective ordinance that we have that reflects facts on the ground. I live in a neighborhood that was legally subdivided in 1915 or 17 or 19. It was subdivided into over 520 by 80 lots, and those are all substandard lots of record. Bulk zoning takes, takes into account the actual size of those lots. My, my neighborhood is actually zoned R80. So it's kind of a, it's kind of a, when you basically look at how the setbacks apply as opposed to how the bulk zoning applies, it's fundamentally different equation. So, from my vantage point, this has been a pretty, this has been an effective ordinance. We've seen it done over the course of, it's proven itself down at Breakwater Village. It's proven itself over the course of the last four or five years that's been in effect. Town council hasn't, in fact, acknowledged the fact that there has been problems created by this, and I can't understand why they would suggest that we get rid of bulk zoning. Thank you.
Steve?
Sure. So, we've heard a lot about guiding the way the town goes. I totally agree. I mean, again, I'm going to reiterate that obviously a five-bedroom plus should have to have a special use permit, but I want to come back to the FAR, because we also have hardscape and softscape, and all of these regulations, when put together, I understand the FAR might permit a 2,700 square foot house, but when you actually do the math, the house is not, that's not what they're going to be able to build, because you have hardscape, you have setbacks, you have building coverage, there's a lot in here. It's a lot. And if we want people to be able to use their property as they see fit, including all the people in the town who own houses, because one day, you may want to change your house. I think it'd be easier for everyone to understand if we remove some of the zoning that has been put in place over the years to change or make it more onerous to build in town. And, I mean, I've got a ton of notes, you guys had great input, we appreciate you coming. I want to thank everybody for coming out. I'm just, I'm in favor of removing some of this onerous and confusing zoning, so that it's easier to build, and that's my piece.
Thank you. I've stated what I've stated, I'm not going to go over it again. I will add this, though. I've heard, and I, I agree to the death on this, that everyone has the right to develop their property. It is fundamental to this country. It triggered a memory in me of sitting in a courtroom in Texas, of all places, who let you do just about anything you want. And I stated that. And the judge looked down at me, and he said, "The problem with people who cite rights is they forget the responsibility that goes with those rights." He said, "Everyone has the right to develop their property. They have the responsibility to make sure that those rights do not infringe on the rights of the other people to enjoy their property." That's what goes with this. I go back, and I stated very clearly, from my 45 years' experience, I don't understand a lot of this, where it's coming from, and why, because there was really no explanation. I do see the results, and I said it last night. I keep coming back to the movie It's a Wonderful Life, and I keep envisioning Potterville, which I agree is an exaggeration, but I think it's a good illustration. I too was thinking about some quotes by council. That one came to mind. Another one also came to mind from a sitting town council. It said, It said, and this goes back to the fact that under FAR, you can build anywhere from 2,700 square feet to 3,100 square feet. And yes, and that includes the setbacks, okay? Hardscape, softscapes are ratios, and they are built in, and we are flexible with those. But the truth is, you can build anywhere from 27 to 3,100 square foot on a 10,000-square-foot lot. And these only go up to, this only covers up to 20,000 square foot. So where is this coming from? This triggered the memory of this quote when Mr. Pugh said, "Purposeful built structures," to make it sound. And the quote is, by a sitting councillor, "I want to go in and get a building permit and build whatever I want." 27 to 3,100 square foot on a 1,000-square-foot lot is obviously not enough. I think this could have been adjusted. I have not been quiet in my opposition of including basements, crawl spaces, cellars, hatches, whatever you want to call them. And I think that could be a fine-tuned fix. I don't understand why you need to throw everything out to make a fix. That's not a fix, and I can't support this. Staff, anything to add?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So we have another agenda item as we move forward.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, did you want to do the same as last evening?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Can we go through, and we need to give a consensus. Doc, how do you feel? This is not a vote, let's go back to procedural. We learned last night, we cannot give a vote because that's not what we've been asked to do. We've been asked to determine, as council put it, thumbs up or thumbs down as far as whether we support or do not support the changes as submitted by the council. Doc?
Thumbs down.
Rupert?
Ditto.
Tom?
Lee, no.
Okay. Steve?
I'll give you the thumbs up.
Okay. I can't support this. It makes no sense. All right. Staff?
Thank you.
Anybody want to take a couple-minute break? I was looking at people. Folks, will we take a five-minute break? Is that enough? Or do you need ten? Five, we'll be back in 10, most likely.
Can you do zoom in, zoom out? Can you do like, can you do like one of those like fog looks, you know? Whenever you're ready. We're on? All right, we're up back. I'm gonna turn this over to staff. For introductions.
Just trying to find my glasses.
Oh, no problem. I thought I saw fine until I got glasses and it's progressively gotten worse with the glasses.
Okay, so the next thing we're gonna move on to is the discretionary ordinance. So this is chapters eleven seventeen and eleven eighteen. I wanted to go through first what the 2024 state mandates were and-
Folks, if you could.
Cover a little bit of how we got to, how we got to the ordinance the way it currently exists. So in the 2024 state mandates, they were, they were actually done in 2023 with an effective date of January first, 2024. Not, so it's a little confusing because then they were the ones that were last summer, which we also sort of refer to as 2024. Only because those took effective, took effect immediately. So we're not talking about those. We're talking about the ones that happened in 2023, took effect January first, 2024. And two of those state mandates are pretty important here. One of them is the substandard lot allowance. So that, that is essentially the, that the setbacks and lot coverage are calculated based on the substandard proportion of the lot. So for example, a 5,000 square foot lot in R10 would be 50% substandard and therefore is allowed by right a 50% reduction in its setbacks and a 50% allow, additional allowance in its lot coverage. So the side yard setback in that case, which was 10 feet at a 50% reduction would be five feet. And then the other important mandate was the modifications, and I believe Mr. Pimental touched on that earlier, which is that the law, the state required that a minimum of 15% variance be allowable on any dimensional regulation without, without the need for a public hearing. Five percent or less, you didn't even have to notify your butters, but five, between five and 15%, you would have to notify your direct butters and an ad in the paper. The, the law actually said you can go up to 25%, but it required a minimum of 15. The other thing is those two provisions can be used in conjunction with one another. So if we took that exact example I just gave to you about that, that side yard setback for the substandard lot, which was five, when you apply the 15% modification, it's now about 4.25 feet from the side yard. I wanted to just point out here because it's come up a couple of times that this is a 5,000 square foot in an R10. You take that example, 5,000 or 8,000 square feet, we'll say, in a substandard R80 lot, which we do have some in town, that's a 90%, approximately 8,700, it's about a 90% deficiency. And because the, so what you see, the star here, which says that law actually changed in June of 2024, so it, it sort of eased up the regulations a little bit and it said, the law changed, that said, okay, your setbacks will now go to your nearest compliant zone. So in the case of an R5, you know, 5,000 square feet in R10, it's always, in an R10 zone, there's no nearest compliant lot. It would go to the underlying zone, which is an R10. If it was a 10,000 square foot lot in an R20, we'll say, it would go to, it's not compliant with an R20, but it would go to the nearest compliant zone, which would be R10. When there is no compliant zone, such as a 5,000 in R10 or an 8,700 square foot lot in an R80, it reverses back to the underlying zone. So in that example of the R80, that's a 90% reduction in setbacks and in a 90% increase in lot coverage. And then add on the modifications. Those are your setbacks by, by right, and then you would add the modification on top of that. So just, I did some quick math as we were sitting here, so we all know how I am with math. In that example of R80, a 50-foot front yard setback would be, would be five feet and a 60-foot side yard setback would be six feet without the modifications. When this board, and I believe three of you at least were on this board when this came forward, there were some concerns that this board had, specifically life safety. And it was occurring to this board that these encroachments and setbacks could be, could be problematic for firemen and EMT for ground ladder. Now, I am aware we have a very nice truck ladder in town. It's beautiful, I've seen it. It's very nice. We have one truck ladder in town. So if there was ever a need for a ground ladder, there is, there's a certain lateral distance that, that the fire department would need to have just by trigonometry, that you would have to have a minimum of 70% of your, of your ladder, you know, your scope at, at this level. And then with the, the ability for the fire person, man or woman, to be able to climb up the ladder with their backpack on, with their gear and pull someone out. And that lateral distance changes at the height of the window. So at 15 feet above the ground as opposed to 20, 25, 30 feet. There was a memo that we put out in 2015, and I know Dr. O'Neal and all of you should have a copy of it.
You do.
And it was attached as part of the report that I provided to you tonight, which shows what the lateral distance would needed would be in order to safely rescue someone from a window at varying heights. That being said, this board decided at that time that life and safety was more important than the modified setback, than the substandard setback with, with or without the modification. And you placed a provision in the ordinance that said, if the setback is five, is less than five feet for a two-story structure, it should go to the, it shall go to the zoning board for a public hearing. And if it's less than eight feet for a three-story structure, it shall go to the zoning board for a public hearing. So that being said, in response, December 2023, the town council approved changes to the dimensional components of the zoning ordinance that took effect January first, 2024. And I pulled this language right out of the report that was provided by this board to the town council. And essentially, it was to retain the ability to limit the impact of oversized homes from overwhelming property as well as a neighborhood and town utilities. I thought that covered it. You're, you're very familiar with the report, at least three of you are, and all of you have received it, as well as I'm sure everyone in this room. So I didn't reiterate all of the reasons of the report. I thought that that one sentence that you had written encapsulated the whole thing. The proposed changes. So the proposed changes are to delete that minimum side yard setback requirement of which you, you know, is, was concern, a life safety concern for this board. It would be to revise the recently changed dimensional regulations and components to pre-2024 dimensional regulations. And some, some of those regulations were eliminated altogether. So Mr. Friday, I think this goes back to what we were talking about earlier, which is section 17.1. It's the removal of some of the parking requirements in cluster developments and a removal of some of the parking requirements in multifamily developments. Just, and also just as a note, there's a typo, I'm not sure. I think they may have meant to delete something and didn't. So there's just a little typo not worth mentioning here, but council will want to know it. So I just wanted to present to you, those are the changes. So when you're looking at chapters 11, 17, that's specific, that, that provision that you, this board placed on for life safety, for the minimum side yard setback for a public hearing for the zoning board. And then the discretionary changes are in 11, chapter 11, 18. And it's, you'll see it as you go through. It's a slash of every dimensional change that had been made in the 2020, pardon me, January 21st, 2024. I want to also say that there have been no, as I mentioned earlier, there have been no changes to the comprehensive plan, there have been no remarkable changes to any other part of our ordinance. In town, I mean, water sewer capacity.
Doc? Not to get too dramatic, but hopefully most of you people in the room haven't watched people die, I have. The idea of not having an adequate access for rescue and a fire, it's just, it's beyond me, it's just beyond me. Do we have, on national rules, we asked for a comment by our fire marshal. And you can imagine, everybody in the room can imagine, or maybe some of you have been in a fire situation, these people running around with those big packs on their back. And as soon as you go up, you have to have ladder access, so the ladder, anybody here who's been on a ladder knows, right? You, you, you need the angle, so it's gotta go out even further. So the idea of no rule, no regulation, it's, for, to go on a little further with this, we have people come before us who ask for variance because they want to cut it down to three feet or two feet or, or whatever. And it's, it's always interesting when we ask them, do they understand that? Oftentimes they say, yeah, but there's just a hedge there, yeah? Fine, the next owner puts the chain, link fence there, two feet off the property. And, and again, you, you take away the, the chance of rescuing somebody. Well, you know, how often does that happen? What, I don't, I just don't understand that way of thinking. Now granted, my background, I spent my whole life preventing tragedy, I mean, that's, that's where I come from. So maybe I, I think of the worst, but the idea of, of taking away something that's considered standard in terms of safety practice in this country, just like, it's beyond me, it's just beyond me. And, and again, I, back to something that was referred to, I, I hope it's just ignorance on the part of the person requesting that we take away this, this safety margin.
Rupert?
So, Ms. Sabo, I guess I have a question, just to clarify really for the audience. So the revisions for the modifications, I think it would be good to explain to folks what a variance and a modification is. And I, I'll try and post, put it out there and see if I hit it right. So variance really is, when somebody's asking for an exception of the town's ordinance when they're building something. And then the modification was, new language added that if the variance is within 15%, it's a modification, but you're still asking for an exception to what the town's rules are in the book?
Okay, so the, the, the enabling of a modification has been in the state law for a while. It is now mandated. A modification is a variance. It's a variance from the zoning ordinance. So it's, the difference is a modification is allowed to be done administratively, meaning it happens if it's less than five, in this case, if it's less than 5% or- 5% or less? Then it could be done without, without any notification in the paper, without the town having to notify the adjacent to butters. It could, it could just be granted. So with a 10-foot side yard setback, you can get 5% of that, so half a foot. If you, if it's more than 5%, and up to 15%, it does require some type of notification. There's an ad that's put in the paper and the butters, the direct butters, not the 200-foot radius, but the direct butters are notified. If there are no written complaints or objections are received from the town, then the variance under the modification rule is automatically granted. But in either case, it's a variance from the ordinance. It's just done administratively.
So related to notification, and this is something they've been wondering about, don't really know the answer. Or if somebody lives across the street, is that considered a butter or is it just adjacent properties, side to side and to the back?
I don't believe so, but we still have Mr. Pimental here. That all, by the way, happens through the, through Wayne's office.
Wayne's on the front line.
Yeah. So direct butters would be direct butters to the property lines of the, of the subject parcel. So if they live across the street, they would not get notified?
They wouldn't be notified.
No. Any other questions on?
Well, you want me to do that later, right? Questions for Wayne or?
Oh, you got them up here.
Okay. So I guess I wanted to get a sense of, so we've had the modification law in place for about a year, just wondering how many applications for modification you've received and sort of if you've turned any down and sort of how you decide to turn them down? Because I read the law and I don't see any real basis. Seems like a pretty high bar to-
Yeah, there would have to be a pretty high bar to me, for, for myself to, to reject one. To date, I've, I've processed 42 applications. Two, two were subject to appeal by one of the butters. And actually, one was not even a direct abutter, they read the newspaper, saw it in there, just opposed to anything tall, and they sent in an objection. But, you know, 42 is quite, quite a bit. All of them have submitted basically because they want to get back what they were permitted to do prior to January 1st of 2024.
So you would say it's working?
It's working, it's put a burden on my office to process them, that's for sure.
Yeah, I know, I know, but yeah, we discussed that when a lot of these changes came down, where the staff was gonna come from.
And I know that there's a, a law in the speaker's package this year that, that changes who can object, so it isn't just people that read it in the newspaper, it's literally just the butters, they're changing that language, so.
All right, I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah.
All right.
Pending, probably will happen.
All right.
They also are changing the standard a little bit, so that I think it gives you a little more room for when things don't make sense to turn it down.
Okay.
I think my other question's really, oh, I know, when, so when the modifications happened, folks in the room don't know, but we, these laws were passed in June and we really had August, September, October, we had to get them to council in October to get them passed in time by the state law, and Terry can speak to that. But I know at the time, you had some thoughts about like, so one of the modifications, the 15% modification is a 35-foot house, 15% modification, we're allowed to build to 40 feet. And I know there were some that you thought, okay, this makes sense that we should back off the 15% for, I'm not putting words in your mouth, but my understanding, back off the 30, the 15% for the house so that we don't end up with 40-foot houses. But I know there were some that you thought probably makes sense to, to not have, to not back off the 15%. I didn't know if you had any thoughts on that.
Yeah, I mean, well, that would be based upon if the regulate, if the setbacks, building height, lot coverage were the old regulations prior to January.
Right.
Right now, a building height is limited to 30 feet.
Right.
So they would, with the 15%, they can go up to 34 foot, six inches. And I think, you know, probably height would be one that should be exempted from the 15% modification. I think the others do work, even if the setbacks and coverages went back, reverted back, it works because there, you know, there's a process there. The only difference between them submitting an application to me or the planning department is that there is no public hearing, but there is a process, the butters get notified, a legal ad gets placed, they have the right to appeal, and as soon as there's an appeal, it automatically goes to the full zoning board for a hearing. So there's a process in place that, that does work. But I think building height would probably be the one that sticks out to me, that probably shouldn't be allowed, that 15%. It should be heard by, by the zoning board.
Yeah.
I, I don't want to be the, I don't want to be the one approving a 40-foot house.
Yeah, we, we didn't have the ability to choose which ones were modified and which ones weren't.
I understand, yes.
I think, yeah, I think that answered my questions. Yeah, and I think the other is, while across the street isn't considered a butter, I think the average person would think of it, you know, that like it impacts a house across the street as was the house next door, so that's why.
Yeah, and the thing is, how far do you go with the houses across the street? It's a tough, it's, it's a tough one to determine that.
It's sort of directly across the street on a small street.
You know, maybe a radius, maybe not 200 feet, but maybe 50 feet.
Yeah.
That way there picks up the ones across the street that would be directly impacted.
We didn't have control of that.
We don't, and I don't have control over that either, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody have any questions for Wayne before he sits down? No. I, I want to thank you, by the way, you're a great asset to this board and always have been, and we appreciate you working with us. We really do.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Being on the front line, it's everybody.
All right. Tom?
I agree with Doc on the, on the minimum side yard setback requirement for safety purposes. I want to learn a little, I was not a part of the board when you got, when the modifications were made after the state law was passed with respect to the setbacks. I heard what Wayne said in terms of the height, but I want to use this opportunity to learn some more before I kind of see where I'm gonna land on that one.
Steve?
Sure. So, I'm gonna shock you. I'm also with Doc about the minimum side yard setbacks for ladders, I think that makes great sense, it's a no-brainer. And I'm also with Wayne, I think that the 15%, if it exempted height, that makes a lot of sense, it's always been 35 feet, 35 feet, you can build a three-story building that's nice and it's, you know, it's, it's not too tall. I, I don't think it should be 40 feet, I agree. The side yard setbacks, I, I don't have a problem with them being reverted back, I mean, these are substandard lots and like, say, this includes R80, which the other stuff we were talking about didn't. And if you've got a 50-foot, you know, 50-foot in both directions, you've got a 10,000 square foot lot, that's 100 by 100, you're already, there's no house there. So I, I don't mind that, I would like to revert the changes to everything but height.
I just want to get a clarification on that because, because there are, there are allowances on the substandard lot in an R80.
Of, of course there are, I'm saying, I think this is, the 15% makes sense to me there, that's all I'm saying.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood.
That's all I'm saying.
I, I kind of thought that's where you were going, but it came out different.
I, I think height and I think the minimum setbacks for safety make perfect sense, but the rest of them, I'm, I'm fine with.
You know, I think everybody's touched base on everything. I don't understand the removal of parking requirements in cluster developments and multifamily. It, it just is like, of all places to reduce parking, you know, we have, we have homes all over, I gotta be honest with you, I rent space from my neighbor when my family arrives, can I park in your driveway? Because we have four lot spots and, and usually there's like 15 people that land at once. You know, it's, it would be like taking parking spots away from housing, it just, this is, this, these are developments that you need parking. I mean, when we review these, you know, I remember just a cluster we had a little while ago, and the big point was parking. You know, a lot of times, I've actually been where my kids have had apartments where they got one parking space. And it's like, okay, is, you know, there's two of them living in this apartment, they both have vehicles. Again, I, I don't understand the rationale behind it. It makes no sense. And I don't, I don't understand a lot of it, so I'll just leave it at that.
Staff?
We, we have no comment. I mean, I, I did in the, in the report-
Yeah.
I mentioned there, you know, that this board has recently made findings with regard to the comprehensive plan and the purposes of zoning, supporting these changes as recently as 15 months ago. So I can't offer you anything else. You would need to go back and look at your report and see if those findings for the comprehensive plan and the purposes of zoning still apply. And if they don't, if they do, great, then you'll need to let us know at the end, at the end of the meet, not necessarily this meeting, but at some point, before the end of these four meetings. And if you can make additional or, or other findings that support what you want to do, then, then you're gonna need to do so on the record.
Yes.
Just to clarify, the, the findings we found to, to make the changes were the changes, not in front of us, but the changes we had made at that time.
Correct, right. So the findings that you made to, to implement these changes in January 2024, that report has been provided to you. So if those findings, it's, the board, the board will need to determine individually and as a group whether or not those findings still apply. And if they do, that will need to be voiced. If they don't, additional findings will need to be made. So that can be put into a report for the town council.
Right, and to justify those changes, there needs to be substantive changes between when we first did it and now, so, okay.
Mark, can I?
Yeah.
Just one question. Is this one of the areas where, when, and I don't know, this may be a question for some combination of the folks on the board and for you, Nick. Is this one of the areas where, when you hear that the town's ordinance is not in conformance or compliance with the state's, the state's law, is this one of the areas that's, that is the subject of that statement?
Well, first of all, we are in, we have the Enabling Act to adjust things to our needs. And that, and we do that within the scope of, of that act. And that keeps us in compliance. So council, I know you're new to us, but I mean, everything you've heard, you know, are we consistent with the, have we weakened the laws and are we keeping to the intent of the law? of the laws?
I don't, I don't think you've weakened the law. There's, in the law, and what frankly keeps me employed, it's open for interpretation often. And by the way, to Mr. Callahan's comment, what you've heard, often people don't know what they're talking about. It's the reality of it.
The reality of it is that we have to deal with it though, so.
True, true. But you, we may get to certain aspects tonight where the spirit of the law or the intent of the law comes up. By way of example, and you know, the first thing that comes to mind when it's not on the agenda tonight is site plant review with everything going to this board instead of right to zoning. Certainly, it's been said that as an alternative to that, the intent of the state law was for zoning to review applications on a case-by-case basis and decide, okay, this application, we need some help on this, send that to planning. That's an interpretation thing. We could argue all night about that. So, I don't think, I haven't seen anything where you are violating state law. Much of what we're dealing with in this whole package is preferential. It's subjective. What this board may like or may not like, you may get an opposite result from the council or members of the public.
But either one would be consistent with state law.
Loaded question.
Assuming, well, no, no.
Subject to me telling you.
Assuming, assuming somebody doesn't go off the rails.
Sure.
Thank you. Tom, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just, there would some, some would argue that spirit and intent, a spirit and a letter on this particular subject in terms of modifying the setbacks so that the net result was no change, notwithstanding the intention of the General Assembly to do something different, is a spirit of the law conversation.
I think you'll get arguments on both sides of that.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Anybody else before I turn it over to the public? I'll come back to the board after public comment.
Okay.
Sir?
All right, Terry Fleming again. I just, I'm sorry, I missed the conversation. Are you charged with modifying the dimensional table in any specificity or going up or down on what they...
We are, we are up or down on what they presented to us.
On what they proposed, okay. So, the simple, I think the simple thing where it relates to the dimensional table, FAR or anything else, is that the board and the council took action in response to the 15%, which I would consider to be almost an automatic thing, I think Wayne's, Wayne hasn't gotten a lot of complaints, hasn't gotten a lot of... And I don't remember in the 30 years at the planning board, many neighbors complaining. So, we took it, and I still take it as pretty much de facto 15% bonus. And I don't know any other word to use for it, a bonus on top of what the dimensions were, and by just filing the requisite paperwork. There was never any rationale for that. Some people expressed it as improving the chances for affordable housing, which was absurd, obviously, to anybody who was being honest. A single-family home 15% bigger is not going to make it more affordable. In fact, probably going to make it less affordable, and has nothing to do with affordable housing. But I think the speaker rolled that out as kind of a smokescreen to justify the 15. We kept coming back that the 15 was just a bonus to builders, just, and homeowners. And quite frankly, if you don't like the setbacks, the height, the lot coverage, then look at that. Don't, don't let the 15% kick in automatically. And that's why we rolled it all back, so that it would come back to what the town had spent years, if not decades, arriving at as the appropriate dimensions for setback height and lot coverage and FAR. That's the simple reason, and I'd urge you to just reject that completely. There's a better way to get at it, but the council doesn't want to do that. And somebody may correct me, but I don't think so. I'll leave you with the last thing. Everything that was in that original package in the housing laws that was mandated, we put in.
We did.
And people characterize what we did with this dimensional table as in violation of that law, and it wasn't. We put the 15% in. We still had the authority to adjust the dimensional table, which we did, I think responsibly so. So, and as to red tape and bureaucracy that arises, it's not because of what we did to the dimensional table. It's because of the law. It's because of the 15%. Because if you revert it back, if the council reverts it back, the same people are going to walk in with the same papers and go 15% above that almost every time. They're not going to be satisfied with that. And a couple of you made, last thing, a couple of points, when you come to the boards for variances, you don't need to if you comply with the law. If you comply with the ordinance, you just go see Wayne and pull a permit. You come to the board because you want more. You want extra. You want a bonus. So, you should be put through your paces. You should have to justify it because you want more than what the town's determined is appropriate. Thanks.
Thank you.
Jesse?
Jesse Pugh, 40 Birchwood Drive. I just wanted to add a little bit of context because I think that everyone on the board here and probably most people in the audience are aware of what we're talking about. But I don't, I don't think maybe generally people in town are, and maybe some people that are watching at home are completely cleared what this is and what this means. I did have quite a few people just come up to me randomly about this specifically because they were under the impression that the town is just arbitrarily decreasing dimensions in the ordinances without understanding why that was. So, they thought, you know, the town is just getting more restrictive, they don't want people to build, they're just lowering all these dimensions. But in reality, what has happened is the state has mandated that all towns and cities allow applicants to receive 15% more across the board on housing dimensions. So, lot coverage, you could build 50% bigger, setbacks, you can, they could be 15% less, and height could be 15% more. So, that's what we're talking about for anyone who's not clear on that. So, what the town did to counteract that is they had their numbers that we've had for years and years and years, like Terry, like Mr. Fleming said. We've got to those numbers because we have worked through those through the years. You know, those have changed. They're never, they're never concrete, concreted or cemented. So, we have the right to change those whenever we want to change them as a town. We lowered all those dimensions by 15% because if you're a builder in Rhode Island, you need to know that now, anytime you build a house for someone, you should always apply for that 15% because you have that. Unless it's challenged by your abut, by the abutter, you're going to be guaranteed that 15%. So, the town said, we have our baseline numbers, we know they work, this is what we like, this is what we've had over the years. The state is now really arbitrarily giving people a 50% bonus. We're going to decrease by 15% knowing that anyone building will apply for that 15% to get back to the baseline. So, there, the net is not a decrease. The net is back to the baseline. And I do think that what it really comes down to is more of a philosophical question than anything else, which is, as a planning board member and as a resident of the town and a town council member, do you believe that the town has autonomy over their own housing regulations? And if you don't, if you think the state should control that, then you don't adjust your numbers. You say, okay, the state's going to dictate that. If you think the town knows their zones better, their housing better than someone at the state level, then you adjust because you want to stick to the numbers that you know are correct or you know that work best here. Terry alluded to this. Some of the reasoning from the state was that this would increase housing stock, it would increase affordable housing. However, this is generalized, it's not specific to substandard lots. So, I do understand the substandard lot argument. For those lots that cannot be built on, that may be an area where you can increase housing stock. I also think that is probably the best, those are the best areas to increase affordable housing. So, unfortunately, this law does not mandate housing be affordable. So, if these modifications were tied to making something affordable, that'd be different. However, it's not. So, what it really does, like Terry said, was it increases the ability to just build a bigger house. That's not affordable, and that's not necessarily increasing housing stock. But that's all I have. I just wanted to kind of like go over the general idea because I think it can be confusing to some people, so.
No, I think it was excellent. We sometimes, we have our own language and we get lost in it, and I have tried to explain things to folks. I think, you know, to your comment, Jesse, and I'm sure Wayne will back this up, is, you know, people get to 15%, and then they ask for a variance on top of that. And it's not just, okay, I'm happy. So, if you go back to, if you wipe out everything we've done and had for years and years, and you go to the state because you believe that the state should run the town, my question is then why do we have local government? But that said, it's a philosophical thing, and I agree. But if you go to the state standards, you get to 15% on top of that, and then people are still going to ask for more. So, you know, when, when do you say no? You know, do we make the fence line 6 inches off the property line? You can't go beyond that? You know, and that's why I don't understand this. Anyway, I apologize for taking somebody's time. Yes, sir?
Joe Volpe, 21 Harbor Island Road. Thank you again. This has been an education for me the last couple of nights, but I find it ironic that I am, a lot of this touches on me personally. I'm a 30-year veteran of the fire department. Joe, you couldn't have said it any better about the safety, life safety issues. I'm also in the process of building a house. I'm getting educated on the FAR. But I touched on it last night. I'm very interested in, I used the word buildability, and I asked Alexa today if that was a word. I'm interested in the lots that may be substandard that perhaps we can put a small house on. That's where the, the increase in year-round and affordable housing can come. If there's no issues with the setbacks on a small lot, and there's a row of houses on small lots already, and it's not affecting firefighter safety, how do we increase those lots being used? I'm interested in it because I own one. Unmerging a lot is a process, and I'm hearing tonight, Wayne mentioned that the houses across the street don't count. This is just an example I'm throwing out. The process is 200 feet, as you all know, within that property is what you have to be 50% larger than 200 feet within a lot, okay? Making those more apt to be buildable by excluding the houses across the street, for an example, can be one way of making a house a lot buildable. Does that make sense, what I'm trying to say? Loosening up the restrictions to make these lots buildable so that we can put homes there for families to come in and use, opposed to there being nothing. Now, how do we make them less than market value? Another idea, just the floor area ratio itself is going to keep it at a smaller-sized property, thus making it more affordable. But what else can you and the town do to, I don't know, make some restrictions on those lots that weren't buildable and make them more available to families? What, these are some of the things we have to think about. You know, I think about my story. I came here from New York, I bought a piece of property, I paid it off over several years, I worked hard, overtime, second jobs. It got me started in real estate, and I parlayed that into other properties. And I've been here for 30 years with a daughter and a school system, okay? I would like to see this story happen again with another firefighter, with another nurse, with my sister-in-law, who is a single mom, right? I'm, I get a lot of gratification out of, you know, educating some of the younger firefighters to do something like this. But that's just my decision. How do we make these lots incentivized or some sort of restriction so that younger families can, can use them? So, that's the challenge, but I think there's a lot of them. There's a lot of them. And according to one of the reports in last year's short-term rental study, there's up to 90 of them in town, and that's according to one of the town, as Mr. Friday knows, the Crane Report. So, yeah, I'd like to see as much as we can do to get these lots buildable, and I don't agree with the way the town threw everything at you. You guys had a lot of extra work to do. But if this was one of the things that the town council, I should say, had in their eyesight to increase affordable housing, then it's something that, you know, the tenor of the conversations, the less, no one's against, everyone's against everything else. This is one thing that we need. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just to clarify a couple of things, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, I think I heard Mr. Volpe mention two, two different processes. One of them is the substandard lot of record where if it is a lot that's substandard to the zone in which it sits, it does get those modified dimensional setbacks already. And depending upon, like I said, what size it is, it will go to the nearest compliant zone or the underlying zone. And the, the other thing that he was mentioning, and I'm not sure for everyone, I'm sure the board is aware, but maybe not everyone, is there is an un-merger provision. So, unrelated to the substandard lot allowance in the modification, the 15%, there's also a law on the books that took effect January 1st, 2024, for an un-merger. So, that's where Mr. Volpe was talking about, the 200-foot radius. So, if more than 50% of the lots within that 200-foot radius are larger than the lot you want to subdivide, equal to or larger, then you can, you can actually subdivide off that, that lot of record. So, there are underlying lots of record. Oftentimes, two or three lots have been combined to meet the underlying zoning. So, you can un-merger those lots. And that, I don't know how many we've had, a few.
About three or four.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so they're, they're happening in town.
Question, and I might be remembering this wrong because I'm tired, but haven't we in the past used average setbacks on streets?
There is a provision in the ordinance for the average front yard setback, yes.
Yeah, so we've used that. We try to get very imaginative. I mean, this is kind of, I don't know if I could use the word exciting, but we don't get people. So, this is the first time people are actually seeing and listening to what we do and how we do things. And, you know, we, we do put a lot of thought into things. I will say something. I was very disappointed when everything came down from the state, and I would also like to pat Terry Fleming on the back and the board. We got this all done and to the town council. We were the first community in Rhode Island, or one of the first, and I think one of the only to get it in by January 1. It was monumental. But the thing that was really disappointing to me was the fact that there was nothing in any of it for affordable. Nothing, not a thing. It was all just bigger houses. And, and the comment was, well, if you build more houses and you're a big builder, houses, it'll make houses affordable. Okay, this isn't a widget. You know, there's, there's market conditions out there. Also, I'd like to compliment this planning board. We have put three, since I've been the chair, we put forward three affordable housing initiatives. One was approved by the last town council. It was a duplex. That is subsequently being removed by this town council. We've come forth, this town council with a mixed use that is still being in discussions. And then there's an inclusionary zoning, which is part of the state law, and we have used the enabling to adjust it so that it actually will work for Naragansett because the way it was worded, it would basically be on the books and would just be unimplementable. So, so we are looking for every avenue. Understand, people have the right to build what they build. We can't tell them what to do. Now, one of the, one of the greatest bargaining tools that we have, which is being given away in all of this, is FAR, is setback, is percent lot coverage. We can negotiate those for a better cause, and the better cause is it affordable or, as Mr. Pugh pointed out, attainable housing. And we try to do that. Those will all go away, and so outside of, and I've been racking my brain, outside of tax relief, and it would probably have to be significant, I don't know... probably have to be significant, I don't know any other way, any other incentive we have to work with, with a developer. And maybe something will come up and I'm just not looking broad enough yet, but I'm trying to figure something out. Because I'm very passionate, as is everybody else on this board, we are passionate about making containable housing. So, anybody else want to speak? Sir?
Thank you, members. Steve Ferrandy, 44 Sylvan Road. I just want to make a comment that, you know, it was, the planning board and the town and the planners, they did the right thing by rolling back the 15%, reducing at some points. Because basically what the state told the whole, the legislature told the whole state is you're going to have to increase everything 15%, a height, a setback, a side, everything. So, you know, this, this actually flies in the face of their own state-enabling legislation to do this and there's variances to do this. So I agree that that was a monumental task and I appreciate that it was done. And it was done for the right reasons. They must have found some, some kind of loophole in the law that says it's, I guess you can have a 25%, but they threw in 15. So basically, the way, what happened was everybody can go back to where the zoning was to keep it the same. And that was what Jesse had explained. And I'm glad, glad it was explained this evening. And, you know, if it was 35 and it went to 40 feet, then you'd, I, I believe you could get four-story houses in that. So, appreciate you would. And the rest of the, there's a couple of little sticky wickets with some of those ordinance and some of the non-conforming, but I think you should reject this ordinance the way it's written, send it back. The town did what they had to do to keep their autonomy and it was the right thing to do. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? Sir?
John Hanley, 10 Willinners Drive. I know we're all tired. Me too. But I guess I was glad to at least get the sense that everybody is against the 40-foot tall houses. That's very good to hear.
Can you pull that microphone to you?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. But I wish you would take that ride down memory lane with me on Sylvan Road and Daytona Avenue and just look at those houses and say, is this what we want? Again, just do me a favor and that, that's all I ask. And again, when you look at this individually on these setbacks and all of this stuff, it is very arguable on should it be eight feet, six and a half feet? And that's not my, wasn't my line of work, so I don't have really legitimate comments on that. But I will say, when I look at all of these changes that the council is asking for, in total, it really sums up to what I said before. It's build wider, build longer, build higher and build closer together. And that's, that's what they want. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And thanks for having all of this stuff because this is a tremendous thing you guys have.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? No? Okay, I'm going to come back to the board. Doc, redirect. Rupert, redirect.
I wanted to, when we sent forward the recommendation for the modifications, we recommended revisiting it in a year and seeing what's working, what's not working and make changes like was done with the bulk zoning. And so we're sort of at that year turn and I think we would have started working on that if this hadn't come in front of us. So I think that's, that's, that would be a good approach to, to move forward with this. And I still, to echo Doc, I think that five-foot fire safety standard is important.
Tom?
Um, I, like I said earlier, I'm supportive of the side setback for safety purposes that we talked about. You raised the right points with respect to the parking, both with regard to the commercial buildings and the cluster developments. On the, on the modifications with respect to the, the setbacks themselves, I am persuaded that, that the town should have autonomy, some level of autonomy over how that's set in terms of what it is. I think that makes sense where the folks know best. I will say from someone who sat outside of that last year, I think Narragansett took a black eye in the conversation with the state in terms of looking like it was being recalcitrant and against essentially a package that while everyone will argue, I think many people argue, did not really address the issues of affordable housing, was packaged that way, sold that way. Narragansett got painted as being essentially an anti-affordable housing area as a result of that. People have talked tonight and I'm sure we'll have additional conversations to go forward about affordable housing. As I said last night, I think we can talk about it at the micro level and we should. What can we do in the town with what we've got? But I think from a macro level, and this is the reason why I think it's important that we communicate on this thing very clearly as we go forward on this, is we need to work with the state, to work with the university, to build more housing at the university. That is the single quickest pathway to reducing the pressure on pricing here as we move forward. If we could get somewhere in the neighborhood of 2,000, 3,000 additional beds built at, net, net additional beds built at the university, then that effect it would have on pricing and Narragansett, I think would be significant. So, I just, in, in order to do that, we, we can't put ourselves in a position, we've got to be able to communicate and communicate effectively about it. We can't put ourselves in a position where we look like we're anti-affordable housing.
Steve?
All right. So, again, I, I mean, I wish that the council, this is the one thing I'll, I'll say about the council on this one, I, I wish they had come without modifying the side yard, the minimum side yard setback. I wish they had not modified the height back to, because I understand they get the 15%. My only qualm with that is they only get the 15% I, I believe if there's no objection from abutters. So by making it 30, you've given your neighbor the power to say, hey, I don't like you. You don't get to build 35 feet even though I could build 35 feet. So I don't love that. I see why they would do something like that. I think the minimum side yard setback is very important. I don't want any 40-foot buildings, but I also don't want my neighbor to come over and say, hey, build that house five feet shorter than I built my house because, you know, X, Y, Z, and there's nothing I can do about it. But this one is going to be hard for me to vote for. I know we're not doing affordable housing right now, but I very much look forward to those discussions with the board as that is something I'm passionate about and I've built affordable housing in several other communities and I look forward to helping the town think about ways to create more affordable housing. I, I've got some ideas I'd love to talk to you about, Mark.
We're, we're looking forward to it.
Yeah, I, I am looking forward to that. And the URI problem, they do need more housing, certainly. What I'd like to do is see if we could talk to South Kingstown and have them change some of their zoning regulations because if there were bars near campus, more people would want to be on campus. We have a great area for fun and people want to be here, but if there was a way to make a down-the-line style setup in South Kingstown, which they were close to some fun bars, I think you'd get a lot more demand there and it would lessen the demand here. That's nothing we can do now and it's got nothing to do with this, but that's my two cents and that's all I got for you.
You realize the entire board in, in South Kingstown just had a heart attack.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I, I made my comments. I, I agree and, and we on the planning board have been trying to work with communications with the university on a non-political level, on a planning level. People don't realize, for example, URI has 101 acres at the Bay Campus. You could easily put a graduate village type style with its own entertainment and stuff and that would be a huge thing. It would take some of the pressure off of Wayne because I saw him smile. But there are options. The unfortunate thing, they're not unilateral. We don't have the opportunity or the power to dictate them. We do have an opportunity to discuss and, and go. One of the things you need to understand is that housing at URI is an ancillary use. So they have to generate their own money to, to do it. Now, they've had bonds and they're rotating the bonds, but they have to wait until one bond is paid off to roll it into another. So they have some limitations also. They're presently working on a private-public project, which hopefully will go through. And if it does, I think that would lead to other opportunities. So, but that said, getting back to this, you know, I look in and see, and, and you are starting to see, but most of the town doesn't see the depth of the work that we do. I don't know how much staff Wayne and Jill would have to have. We're free. And I don't see where anything substantive has changed in the town since, since we put these in. We were scheduled, it was part of the discussion of our, our schedule for this year is to look at this and setbacks and to see what works and what doesn't work and reach out to the community, but also Wayne and stuff. But I think again, to throw the baby out with the bathwater is not a fix. This is an elimination. And again, there's, there's validity to, to what this is. So, anyway, I will go through for a consensus. Remember, we're not voting, but we're letting the staff know whether or not we approve or don't approve.
Are we still using thumbs?
We can, but I think they want speech too.
Speak? Thumbs down.
Doc has a thumbs down.
Yeah, yeah, I think the red line in front of us, I would, thumbs down as well.
I don't support it as it's currently drafted.
I'm, I'm having a very hard time.
That's okay.
Because with the exception of the minimum side yard setback, I am actually in favor of this. Even with the height, just, I, I wish there was no 15% on the height. I don't know how we can get around that without giving away the ability to build 35 feet. I know not everybody likes 35 feet, but there are a lot of very nice-looking houses in this town that are 35 feet. The houses that you referenced, I have driven by them. They're hideous. There's no accounting for taste. I admit it. But if your neighbor wants to build an ugly house, it's kind of their prerogative. It's difficult to stop them from building something just because it's ugly. So I, I mean, it doesn't matter, it's four to one if I go the other way. So I guess I'll go the other way just to stay in line with my usual operation up here.
We, we respect that. I can't support this as it's constituted, simply because there has to be a point where you have some sort of parameters. And when you look at what is in place, especially for substandard lots, you know, you get the bonuses you need. And then there are, there's a variance process on top. And we've had people come in and, and say, hey, because of this, I need this. And we've granted those variances. So as it's constituted, I can't support it. Staff, is that sufficient?
I got it. Thank you.
Okay.
So, are we ready?
I'm ready if you're ready.
Just trying to get us, I'm trying to get us to the schedule.
Yep.
I think it's, yeah, I think it's back a little further. There we go. Thank you. Thank you. There we go. So this is, so we've just tackled March 25th. So for everyone in the room and at home and on our board, we have the two more meetings that are left next week. And the intention is by the end of that fourth meeting, we will have, we will have a recommendation that we can provide to the town council. I'm just letting everyone know in case you want to snap a picture or...
And so if anybody wants to take a picture, and just so you know, the reason why this is a tight schedule is we have a deadline to, by law, and it's by procedural law, which we cannot play with, to, we have a deadline, a hard deadline to get it back to the council and we intend to do just that. Wayne, thank you for coming. Appreciate it. So, do I, I'm getting there? You, you got a hot date tonight? Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second it?